Domestic violence and sexual assault with a sub. I'm gonna start over just because. Schedule item master agenda item number twelve oh seven DOJ will be a W grow domestic violence dating violence sexual assault and stalking program grant award acceptance. Um action expected vote to accept the award for up to seven hundred thousand dollars over three years spent within the cap capacity care program which will serve victims of domestic violence sexual assault and self grant. When that next center violence provision hire a victim's advocate and sub grant to check your medical center. For medical forensic program manager as well as other related activities. Suzanne, why don't you start if there's anybody who wants to introduce a little bit more than that thing go ahead.
Yes, I'm Suzanne Bensley grants manager and adding to the action expected with votes is to also authorize me to. Virtually accept the grant agreement on the grants management platform. For Chris Coats to sign the sub recipient agreements that we'll chat about in a moment and for both me and Jen. To be authorized certified officials and liaison with regards to this agreement so that we can do financial reports and drawdowns. All of that verbiage is in the certificate of growth that I've emailed to you. Um, this is a department of justice, a federal department of justice grants for seven hundred thousand dollars spread over three years. We are going to sub grant it nearly in full, keeping just a tiny amount in indirect for the county. It is pretty much all going to go, not exactly half and half, but to Cheshire Medical, Tricia's on will be overseeing Lindsay and uh. Kelsey. Who will be managing the medical forensic program and then we have. Nick, who will be overseeing the direct services director and. Both of them are going to be hiring a new position, Mick will be hiring an advocate. And Cheshire Medical Lindsay and Tricia will be working together to hire. A coordinator slash program manager of the medical forensic program. Uh, I will let Nick tell you all about what the funds will be spent on and what the program and its outcomes are. And I can answer any technical questions on those grant or. Nick.
Great. Um, good morning, everybody. Good to see people again. Um, I think it's Nick Hirsch, executive director and our center of violence prevention, also known as M C V P. Um, I just celebrated my one year anniversary as executive director, so this was a fantastic one year anniversary gift. Uh, one of my goals for uh my first year was to uh. Get a a good sized award and the first moment that I met Suzanne, we started talking and strategizing about how that was going to happen and. Uh, thank you Suzanne for your incredible support. Ideas and talents and friendship and everything, so.
Actually, I'm sorry, I hope you still feel the same.
But um, just in short, make the this this program um. This fascinating care project will uh essentially accomplish four things. One is collaboration. And that's collaboration, not just between uh M C V P and the Cheshire Medical, which is something that I think is so important. We've already had a very good collaboration between these two uh organizations, agencies. Um, but there was nothing that would really ever form class and this will, this will really kind of just solidify and bring it together, formalize it. And the 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 other really exciting part of it is that the Cheshire County SART, so the sexual assault resource team. Um, that's led by Kathy Kimball. Out of the attorney general's office uh for the state, um, they will be kind of overseeing this project and so there the 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 multi uh. Disciplinary expertise that has been comprises to start. Um, which in these law enforcement and medical teams and uh prosecutors and I I mean, it's it's just a an incredible team. Will all be working together and bringing input uh into this project and I I think it'll uh again, it'll solidify that. Um, that those those partnerships that have already been taking place but really focused and uh, you know, something developed. Um, the second thing is the expansion of services. One thing a lot of people may not realize is that even with regards to with two sexual assault cases, for example. Cheshire Medical and the incredible, they're they're called same nurses, sexual assault nurse examiners, they're medical forensic um uh professionals who are able to. Take those medical forensic examinations um at the time or very soon after a sexual assault occurs. They're incredible. Lindsay, whose name you see up there is one, Kelsey is another one. And there's a few others at the uh at Cheshire Medical. But none of them are trained in pediatrics. So that means if the child, and this is just one example, so that means if 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 your child sexually assaulted. You go to Cheshire Medical, they're going to turn you away and say that if you want this sort of exam done, you gotta go up to other. Um, and we have to divert people to different counties, different hospitals. Um, this grant is going to enable some training to take place so that these some of these uh same nurses are going to get that added level of expertise. So then we can now care for a broader portion of our base. Uh, we're also and our our goal with this project is to really open it up to the entire lifespan. Of being able to provide care for um and as uh. So the the entire lifespan as well as different types of violent assaults, so not just sexual assaults, but more emphasis also on domestic violence, so that sort of thing. Third thing is awareness, we're going to do some outreach into the community, but we're also going to do a lot of outreach and this is going to be on um M C V uh M C V P's uh. New employee to bring some training and some understanding to the medical professionals at the hospital so they better understand how to identify things. We're going to have a uh advocate embedded in the hospital working full time and I'm so excited about this because this is how we do. Real true continuity of care, real true comprehensive and holistic care by working together and collaborating. But by having somebody there, so imagine if somebody comes into um the emergency department with a broken bone. This advocate has already provided a little bit of you know, training for the medical professional staff. They see that person come in with a broken bone and they say, some of this sort of look right here. They can go straight to our advocate right there in the building and say, do you mind us going down? Having a conversation, check, kind of checking style. Uh, I think it's gonna, I I think that's gonna be that kind of awareness and that kind of uh, you know, working together in partnership is going to be a game changer. The fourth one, maybe Lindsay wants to talk about this, Lindsay, I don't know if you're there, but um, the the fourth one is to is again to expand that capacity of the medical forensic uh examiners and the same nurses.
Lindsay, can you hear me?
Oh, yeah, great.
Can you guys hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Yeah, so hi, my name is Lindsay. I'm a nurse practitioner in O B G Y N and then I'm also the part time director of medical forensic care at Cheshire. Um, so currently we have uh four providers and and nurses that perform forensic exams. We want to expand our team to um. Include uh, oh, I'm sorry, we have six examiners, so myself and Kelsey who are two in the leadership positions and also perform exams. And then we have um uh for other team members, our hope is to expand that to an additional two. And we would like the majority of our team members to become pediatric trained, um, which Mick mentioned. And that is going to require a decent amount of hands on training, which unfortunately we can't get um. Currently locally, we have to travel for that. Um, and then the other thing that we're hoping to do in terms of expansion of care is to insti- uh institute a call program. So currently what happens when somebody comes to the emergency department reporting a sexual assault. Is that um, we have our list of examiners and the triage nurse or the charge nurse will call down the list of available examiners. Um, or the trained examiners and hope that one of us is available. Um, we don't have a call program because right, Cheshire wasn't um uh able to uh support one and so um. We couldn't pay people to be on call and waiting for that call to come in, so it was, it's we're basically just kind of at the. Um, at the mercy of people's personal lives and schedules, so are uh, one of the goals of the grant. And that it will accomplish is to help us institute a partial call program so that we can better guarantee. Specialized forensic nursing coverage when people come into the emergency department or if we get a call from the ICU or another inpatient department. Um, wanting us to uh come in and evaluate a patient.
Any questions?
Do you anticipate that a call program will be available in the foreseeable future? So that twenty four seven, someone will be able to come in to be evaluating and examining these these patients.
So I think that if we can get, if we can hire on, which I anticipate we can, we can hire on two additional um examiners. Um, and I I think with these funds, Cheshire would be able to, I hope. Um, supplement the funds that we currently have to expand it from a partial call to a full call. Um. And hopefully sooner than later, not just at the end of the the three years, Cheshire will be able to support that that program. I'm hoping that it'll be um much sooner. So yes, I I think so. I don't know, we're we're still, we still need to run the numbers on this year and see where we're at in terms of. Call volume, you know, what times of day, what um days of the week. Um, the last time we did that was a few years ago and there wasn't much of a pattern to when people were showing up. But um with the the uh beginning of a of a partial call program, that's one of the things we're going to be looking at is. Um, what is the best time to have somebody on call um to be really targeted on? Um, when people are available and then again, my hope is that if we can hire on two more examiners. Um, and um, and Cheshire with Cheshire support, we can have actually a twenty four seven call.
You know, I I wouldn't mind. I I wouldn't mind um getting a better sense than it's probably in the narrative of the grant application and that's fine. Um, we don't need to drill down that far today if you don't want to, but I'd be interested in. Um, reading, um, I guess the application that talks about the need and the patterns and the and the statistics and that sort of thing.
Yeah, I can forward that to you today.
Okay.
And a follow up question. What are the approximate numbers for for these statistics uh for the calls to uh. To an adjunct center of grounds protection? Is it one or two a week or six per month or forty per year? Uh, you have that information at hand back?
For for the total number of calls, we I definitely can get that information. Uh, I don't know that number off 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 the top of my head or. So we we would also divide our calls into the different types of calls, so they. Uh, if we get a a specific call that is for a same exam. Uh, where one of our advocates is requested to go to the hospital, that would be a, that that would be a specific kind of call. Uh, but uh, and again, I don't know the numbers off the top of my head, but uh. But the way that the the system has been working and it's been working, you know, well, that's why we wanted to, you know, do uh submit a grant. Improve the, you know, improve it even more is that every time a person is in need of a same exam. Not only are the same nurses uh called, but we're also immediately triggered uh for a call as well, so uh, so we would would always be going to those.
What again is the is the meaning of S A N E?
Sexual assault nurse examiner.
Yeah, and we're trying, we're trying to.
Estimated one hundred and fifty cases to be provided over the three years.
One hundred fifty?
One hundred fifty, one five zero.
So one a week after.
Roughly.
Lindsay, you have a question?
Yeah, I just, we're we're trying to um uh reframe and and um. Uh renamed our, we've tried to rename the program and and we're still working on getting that. Um, kind of more commonly used instead of being called sane nurses, we're we're calling the program, we call it, currently we call it our medical forensic care team so that. There's more of an understanding that we're not there just for sexual assault, but also for domestic violence and other forms of violent crime. We generally see on average in terms of just acute sexual assault anywhere from twenty to thirty cases in a year. And that's just mostly from the emergency department. That doesn't include um. A a lot of the time, it it hasn't, it's not included domestic violence because. The ED was either not recognizing that domestic violence was a factor or. They weren't realizing that they could call us to assist with those things. So that's one of the things actually that we've already collaborated with M C V P on. When they come in, um, the the emergency department is much better at calling M C V P than calling us for a domestic violence case for whatever reason, so. One of the things that M C V P advocates have been really good at is um asking them to call a forensic nurse in, so we have been getting more domestic violence calls. We expect our numbers to go up the more that an advocate is present and can advocate for that. Um, for instance, uh at Dartmouth, they started a program about uh ten years ago. And they initially started with sexual assault. When they started seeing domestic violence, human trafficking and the other forms of violence, their numbers um ballooned. They grew exponentially and so now their program, which sees hundreds of cases a year. Um, they're seeing a majority non-sexual assault cases, so I I think it's a bit of a field of dreams situation. It's an if you build it, they will come. Um, because it uh sexual assault and other forms of violence are historically reported, so it is hard to give hard and fast. Your numbers because we just know that people just don't report it, but the more resources we have and the more community awareness and um education on campus, we. I believe and and the um, the research that is available shows that there will be um more disclosures, um, the more supports there are.
It, you know, and we, I I agree that I think, I think that's a, there's a lot of undercounted and underreported um incidents. Um. Uh, the question I have is how are we going to actually um. Track that because my my experience kind of, I'll say with um. With uh. The uh Cheshire and the ED and other sort of um response um entities is it's tough to. Um, have a consistent um tracking and plotting mechanism statistically. And. And I think that's that's why we don't see. Or we don't characterize or we don't respond appropriately based on certain clinical indicators or. Stuff, so how are you, who who's going to actually develop a reliable statistical tracking mechanism? If you know.
So we, yeah, we so currently myself and Kelsey Page track all of the cases that we get consulted on, so. We track um and that was not always the case, so starting in twenty seventeen when we started. And then um in the last couple of years, as we moved into leadership positions. Kelsey and I have been tracking both our acute cases, people that are coming into the emergency department. Coin sexual assault or domestic violence and we're getting calls from the emergency department to respond, so we're tracking those. We have demographics, you know, patient demographics and. Um, metrics, time of day and all that sort of thing. And then we also are tracking our non-acute cases, so one of the things that we had instituted a few years ago was a forensic nursing pager. So that if during clinic hours, somebody in family medicine or pedics has a question, it's not an acute case, but maybe somebody has a disclosure from two. Months ago, um, and they're not sure how to direct them or what to do with them, they can contact us, so we've also been tracking those consults. Um, so I, you know, we'll continue to track those um in that way. I think also the M C V P and Mick, I'm sure can speak to this, M C V P um will likely be tracking their metrics because. Somebody that's being seen by M C V P may not be being seen by the forensic nurses. Um, so we're going to have different sets of numbers. Um. But uh, but I again, I think with it, in terms of recognizing when somebody needs a consult. That's going to come with, and it has, we have seen it in improving with more education, more awareness. A lot of what we see is that, you know, the emergency department is incredibly strapped. As are other departments and a lot of the lack of screening and a lack of. There's a lack of awareness about red flags, but there's also a lack of screening for violence and safety concerns and a a big. Uh root of that problem, we believe and have seen is that people don't know what to do with a positive disclosure. Um, there's, you know, we can ask a question, but then what are we supposed to do with that answer? You know, are we supposed to fix it? How do we fix it? We're supposed to be here talking about their blood pressure, right? So if we have an advocate and we have a medical forensic team that can actively respond and allow the medical provider to just focus on. The medical piece and allow us to focus on that forensic piece and the safety piece. Um, uh, we think that we're going to get more positive screens and then again, be able to track when we're consulted for those.
Well, I like the idea of everybody keeping their own statistics and then analyzing the delta between them because I think that goes towards. Uh, information awareness, labeling, characterization, bias, all of those sort of things that might um be responsible for. A failure to recognize or appreciate some of the symptomatic presentations that otherwise would elude us.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, the grant requires certain outcomes to be tracked. And Jen will be requesting updates on those statistics to be sent to her with their invoices. So we will have fairly regular updates on that. It's up to each of the agencies to develop their own system for tracking. At a minimum, it can be done on Excel.
And this is really, I I mean, this is an opportunity to uh, we're for the first time, the both programs, M C V P and uh. The uh, medical forensic team are are going to have staff who have time and they're dedicated to developing tools and and reporting mechanisms and things. So um, I mean, it's a, it's a great opportunity to uh to to ask the questions and then try to figure out, you know, what are the, what are the best ways that we could uh, that we can address this.
It's always troubled me that in the college uh population, there's some really gross uh underreporting and and. Malignant ignorance around sexual violence. So I don't know, I don't know how to fix that, but.
Yeah, the, I think that the thing that's really positive, like Mick mentioned, the SART that we sit on, there are, there are um representatives and very active members, Jeff Mayer. Um, Kat Workman, um, uh, uh, and Kat, I can't remember her last name. Um, are from, uh, there's a Keene State College representatives and then there's also Franklin Pierce representatives. So um, we're, we work directly and we also sit on the sexual violence prevention team at Keene State College. Um, and we've gone and done some trainings at their health clinic. Um, they are coming to uh Kat Workman from um Keen State. Coming onto the treasure campus, actually this month for our sexual assault awareness month to um. Disperse and hand out resources and education about the issues on campus and their resources, so. Um, I think the starts a really great place for us to continue to all come together and to figure out how to work together and um. And optimize that those partnerships, um particularly, you know, how we can support the health center and the Title Nine office and and vice versa.
Lindsay, what do you, Lindsay or Nick, what do you see as the nexus between? Uh, substance abuse and sexual violence and kind of the cloak that. Obscures um sexual incidents during substance abuse periods like, you know, we. We've heard something on the order of, you know, eighty percent of college sexual assaults. Uh, occur under a rather profound substance abuse overlay that, you know, makes people ashamed. Or they don't remember or whatever, you know, so there, I mean, there seems to be a connection and I'm just wondering if there's any. Mechanism or thought to um. You know, kind of including that somehow.
Well, I can speak to it from, and I'll let Mick speak to it from his perspective, but from from the medical perspective. We see a huge overlap between not only just, you know, acute, more recreational substance abuse like from the. Um, college students, but also, I mean, I would, the last four sexual assault cases we've had were. In people who had really significant social determinants of health, which included poly substance abuse disorder. And so um, one of the reasons that we have been so eager to um to partner with this uh center for population health is because much like the doorway program. Um, and substance abuse, violence um is really at the intersection of where health and um. Uh, social factors kind of meet. Um, and so just like in um with uh substance abuse, you know, we see. Yes, we see substance abuse in the acute setting where people come into the emergency department having overdosed or are trying to detox. And we see them in those situations, but we also see people that are pregnant and just happen to also use substances or. They're seen in the orthopedics department and they've got severe pain, but also have a substance abuse issue, so. They're constantly intersecting with uh long term health issues. Um, si- the same thing is true for violence and so it's not just an emergency department issue. Um, we see violence, somebody might be being seen in orthopedics for a broken arm that was a result of a domestic violence situation. Someone might be be, might be seen in um family medicine for uh chronic pain, which is actually. You know, interrelated to a history of trauma PTSD and um violence at home. So I think that there is a a significant overlap between the occurrence and the prevalence of violence. And the um prevalence of substance use. One causing the other and then vice versa, right? People that have experienced violence and trauma often utilize substances as a coping mechanism. And then people that are utilizing substances might experience violence as a as a result of being impaired. Um, so I think they're really interlinked and from a medical perspective, there's really good evidence showing that they're interlinked and that. From from a medical perspective, we need to be addressing um medical care from a trauma informed lens. Um, and treating all patients basically as as if they've experienced trauma. Um, and then again, working really closely with the Center for Population Health to figure out how do we bolster up those community services to. Meet patients where they're at and to um ki- kind of cover both at the same time.
Great, thanks.
Any other questions? Any other parts of the presentation that hasn't done, seeing none? Then I would add for motion detective ward of up to seven hundred thousand dollars over three years to implement the court uh capacity care programs will serve victims of domestic violence. Central song, sub grant, the normal office for violence provision to hire a victim's advocate and a sub grant to Cheshire Medical Center for a medical. Forensic program manager as well as other related activities.
I so move second.
Okay. Commissioners, any other questions? Seeing none. Commissioner Wadmack.
Aye.
He's from. Commissioner England.
Hi.
And Commissioner Clark, motion carries three nothing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll be.
Thank you.
I'll be interested in learning about follow up and how this goes because I think it's pretty exciting and thanks Lindsay for and everybody for all this work.
Is there an interval you want to plan on scheduling?
Uh, no, whatever, whatever is appropriate from your your judgment.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, uh master agenda item number one, two, zero, eight, victims of pride back, hookah, grant agreement. Uh, for fiscal year, uh Suzanne Bens, uh twenty sixth, Suzanne Bens leads here, speak to it.
Could we skip ahead to the item for the cops award acceptance? Because Eli is here in honor of that. It is master agenda item one, two, one, zero.
Oh, fine. Master, master agenda item. Number one, two, one, zero, D O T cop award acceptance off the train simulator. Um, Eli is here and Suzanne is here, action expected vote to accept an award of eighty thousand dollars for the virtual reality training. I'm sorry, I wasn't funny when I scored them, but I hope you guys remember. All right, you know, and from about six hundred hours of training. To about a hundred and fifty law enforcement officers in the county, Dogres Sheriff Eli Rivera, County Administrator Chris Costa virtually executed a grant agreement into sole source. Procurement of the Apex off the pro train simulator patch. Suzanne.
Uh, this is originally a congressionally directed spending request. Through Senator Sheen's office in twenty twenty three, so this is phase two of two where we then uh, once she had selected in and it made its way through the long pathway at. Down in Washington DC through all of the appropriations, it was among those that were awarded. And then the next phase after that is to submit a complete and thorough Department of Justice application, narrative and budget, the whole nine yards. I did that in the spring and then now they just issued the award. Inclusive in that eighty thousand dollars is a small amount if needed for supplies, uh training supplies and safety kits. I can answer any questions on the contract or the grant and Eli can tell you about what we're doing with that.
So um, the grant um was an opportunity that came to us, um, this will be one of a kind of uh. Uh, for the county and and the extended um uh counties around us. Where we will be able to um create um virtual reality type scenarios of any kind. It basically blends like whoever is controlling um the. The the scenario, you know, um where they want to go with it. Um, officers will be, can be trained anything from deescalation techniques to handling someone with a mental illness to. I'm dealing with somebody with who is actually an aggressor. Um, or you know, if the scenarios are unlimited. Um, the fortunate part about it is that with the company that we have gone with, um, they have um had this equipment and other um. Police Department Sheriff's Office throughout the country and uh testimonial and the reviews have been excellent because it's a. Pick up and go, you know, um, the goal is to train anywhere. pick up and go, you know, um the goal is to train anywhere between six or a dozen um instructors in the county so that they can um use it, the equipment as needed. Whether they um come here, whether they go to the police departments or or at a school, wherever they want to use it. Um it allows for um um scenarios with one officer involved, two officers involved. Um so there's the, like I said, the scenarios are limited. This, so I I think this will provide an opportunity at that um for the county and and the law and agencies throughout the county that they can have, you know, in-house scenario and training they can have themselves that create they create um at any time, you know, um with ability to us to uh uh train some instructors to be able to use equipment. Um uh and the additional supplies that we're getting with it, it's ability to purchase uh uh all the equipment that we actually carry, uh which consider the blue blue training weapons. That way, at no time, there's a risk of actually deploying our own equipment. Um so you buy uh it's it's a plastic, um you know, gun, a plastic shotgun, a plastic knife, a plastic OC spray, any equipment that we use, or can the potentially be used against them. You know, that way we can kind of modify the scenarios, um and they can are are able to use um what they carry every day. Um or, you know, and and go from there. So um the beauty about it is that um uh you know, anyone can actually be a a role, a role player and decide where they want to go with their role. So, you know, I know, for example, I could have a Commissioner Clark come in, hey, uh Terry, you know, today we're gonna have a, you know, and we're gonna put a couple guys through scenarios. Go with it wherever you want to go. Because we do, we just don't know what we're facing when we go off to the call. The call to the officer was, okay, we have a a distraught individual at his home, mom is calling. Okay, so you have, like, they have a choker, they have virtual goggles, you type in, you type in the scenario where, you know, with the 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 actors whenever appear. Does it also appear like on screen? Um you have a screen that shows like kind of the avatar that you are and who they're seeing. Um and and you can decide which way that avatar is gonna show. Right, so they can, so the difference, everything on your, everything on your belt is sort of like dot com, right? Right, you know, yeah. So you know, you can, um um you know, you you speak through it, you know, you're giving the, you're talking through a microphone and they're hearing it. But it's um, I I, you know, there's.
Yeah, watching on screen when a person's going through it.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, the instructor on the other side is seeing sees it on the screen.
Yeah.
So this equipment can uh can it be used, you know, somewhere else or you have to bring it all? It's it's um plug and play, you pack it up and take it wherever you go, because it comes with its own um um backpack that they're wearing that controls the 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 goggles simulation, you know, it comes with its own computer system that talks to the um the goggles. And we'll take this room, set it up over there, and that's the way into the where the apartment and you can go from there. So you can go, you can, it's mobile. So that's why the benefit of that training other police departments with it, so they can come get it and use it versus.
Eli, will you be prepared to make this a session at the uh a county annual conference? Uh will it be teed up and trained by then?
I I do require a uh a a view of a mountain with a pea-sized bed and a hospitality room. Absolutely, absolutely. No, this is, I think, like I said, it's because it's the mobility of it, you can carry, carry it anywhere.
Well, I mean, I think if if we wanted to demonstrate it to other, like corrections or sheriffs uh or even school kid, school folks uh for active shooter, or, I mean, I I can see a a number of applications. So assuming that.
So my goal is to.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so my goal is is train a couple deputies, um ask um, you know, um Doug, uh who he will like from his, from the county jail to be trained and the use of it. And then reach out to um agencies throughout the county who might be interested in becoming, I know there's at least four um outside agencies interested in becoming instructors already. Um so that will give us, you know, you know, people that can go around with it and can be used, so.
What's the duration of the, I mean, we're buying this equipment, or is this a subscription, like software licensing, or what, what's the deal?
We're buying, we're buying equipment straight out on with the grant, you know, as uh there's, you know, there's up with everything else is upgrades and, you know, new scenarios that they can kind of um download um that we can use to uh to add to what we create. Um so there's no, there's always updates and firmware that needs to be continued. So there might be um some reoccurring cost to maintain equipment up to date. Well, this is something that we could, you you know, if you're gonna train other agencies, that, you know, you could charge a fee later on for them to participate if we needed to.
Not much to make programming come off federal grant.
Well, well, I mean, even to maintain, you know, the the upgraded equipment and things like that. Well, my.
Please, I was looking to the details, probably not. You're not supposed to be making money off of federal.
It's not really making money, it's self. I can, I'll probably have the host agency providing the coffee at the one I fly. But you know, it's it's one of those things that I have this vision, and I know I've talked with Chris about is that um the one of the biggest challenges around this county is is training, local training. Right, and I've been able with some of the um with the settlement fund to bring training here. Um and this itself, you know, we use um one of the reason behind it that that we have a lot of small departments. And then we want to be able to provide this sort of training to those small departments. That, you know, they can't take a day to go somewhere, or they can't actually purchase it, because a federal rent for, let's say, for Roxbury or Troy or something like that, for this equipment is gonna be denied, because they don't, with us as a county, they look at it as a better uh uh a larger group benefiting from it. Um so, and I know that I've been talking with Chris about how can the county be able to provide uh training to the to the local police departments, um when they're one officer, two officers, that they can't afford to drive to conquer, because I might have to get, I might get called on after drive, we're back to conquer and 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 so I think this is kind of where this is help, will help us kind of keep that momentum of providing, um you know, uh quality and 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 realistic, as realistic as we can, training that's um I need a, I guess my question was, you know, years down the road, still using this thing to sustain the operation. Um, you know, do we, when we need to upgrade the software, I mean, you know, maybe, maybe a piece of it breaks or whatever. Will we be able to go back and get money for the grant or?
No.
Yeah, so we're gonna, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to, you know, ask the taxpayer for that rather than
Yes.
Saying, okay, now after three years, you know, uh if you want to use it, you know, you're gonna give us ten bucks or something like that. You can't do that.
No.
No, I don't, I don't think that.
The original purchases from federal funds in all technicality, they reserve ownership of it until it reaches a non-useful life. And at that point, why would, I mean, if we wanted to upgrade from there, we would have to go through vast amount of paperwork and request permission from the federal government would be beyond worth our while. But if you watch it, I would recommend do that maybe in the future, the next iteration of something like this, consider buying it out of county funds. And then, yes, you could turn it into a program that generates rather. But under federal grants, at this point.
I'm just concerned that, you know, it it it'll become a a a program where the county is now funding training for
Yes.
for all the police departments in the area, without the police departments in the area contributing to the county. It's similar, it's similar to the whole, it's similar to the mobile command poles. You know, it's not, it's a county own, it's a county mobile command poles. So it's not used just for a county uh sheriff's office incident. We bring it down to Troy or or for, or we bring it to Dublin, you know, because those local department has for it. I'm I'm looking at this same way, you know, yeah, it looks like the county's um now paying or whatever, but there's a huge benefit to that. I understand that, but we also, when we needed to upgrade and repair the 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 outpost, you know, the mobile outpost, we we got a grant to do that, yeah, so.
You could seek from the departments to be like, oh, this is gonna cost this much money, we need you all to contribute. That's okay, but you can't charge a fee.
Yeah.
For use of the equipment paid out of federal funds, but behind say, we need this much to upgrade, everybody could change.
I think the reality that we're facing right now is that one, towns are struggling to find staffing to fill positions. When they do find the positions, they're still understaffed. I mean, I was talking just from the city, you know, I was talking to a police officer two of them this weekend, you know, last uh, well, sometime last week, uh and I was, you know, talking about the short, they're down nine officers, ten uh ten, really, they have one academy right now.
They've once deployed.
That person, that he's got a year's worth of training before he's alone, and so so and they're they're doing everything they're, that's the city teams, that's the biggest force in the area. But you've got, you know, you've got Hensdale, you've got Lynch, you've got all these other places that are struggling to find staff. So if there's a way that we can find the fund and strengthen the workforce that's in place without taking them off for a long period of time, and also um supporting our communities without it at, you know, without a cost to us at this point, I think it's a fine balance. That's what that's what Eli and I talked about is how do we do it? If we're going to do it, how do we do it? How do we do it? And at some point, you know, it may come that the towns do have to pay us on things that we can do, but right now, currently, because of the way we're going about it, we can't. But this is just another avenue of violence. Taking on and and strengthening what we have in my will, because I don't want to take the other sample. I don't want us to continue to grow and take on towns, you know, and take on those duties, because towns can't find people. So if we can strengthen on our own somehow, that's our goal.
The open settlement funding that we were with the, yeah, you know, we, you know, it was gracious that I was given some of that money, it was gonna twenty thousand dollars to use for training. And we have, the last one is Monday, um the past four series that we put together. Um I think we had about a, I think we're gonna be at about a hundred and fifty's four hundred and sixty people that attended. So, you know, you know, that I would have not been able to go to training like the one we put out, you know, so, you know, we're providing, you know, being a resource to smaller towns to be able to get quality training, you know, at host, you know, hopefully while we continue to have grants at low cost.
My, in my understanding and correction of all, if you're always gonna have to have a training live training in the community where people work off each other, there's a situation that they're going through. But this is a, this opportunity, this simulator allows, still do that, but now we can take some of that and do this here and keep people more local. Because I will tell you that there was, in the paper, you saw that there was a accident in Dublin where one student lost his life, the other one was sent to the hospital, the other one was sent to the hospital and released. There was a mass training going on in New Ipswich that day, and Dublin, you know, was staffed with they could, but they had a whole bunch of people for New Ipswich staffing there, and we can, those situations that are are occurring more and more, if we could do some of this type of training where people more local, they can get to situations quicker too, I think. I mean, it's a balance, so. Okay, so if you see none, no other questions?
Eli, I do have two, a couple of questions. Um I've seen this simulator and it sounds like it does have applications or scenarios specific to corrections. Is that right?
Um, yeah, they they it's um, it's called Apex Officer, and um they kind of um cater, you know, sheriff's office, law, police department, so the different scenarios um that they create and have available are are numerous, and if they don't have them, they'll create them.
Okay, and yeah, it was excellent what I had seen, and it were, it was scenarios, you know, with the avatar within a jail or prison environment, and it was ve- very good. And I just want to check, it's a train, the trainer model, so you said you'd be looking for maybe a couple of my staff here to to get trained.
Yeah, um well, the first, once we get the equipment, part of the purchase is is the training of of a number of instructors so that they can go out and actually use the equipment and 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 provide the training to provide it forward. So that's the first part, where we just identify instructors to learn about the equipment and how to use it, and so they can be deployed to the field.
Okay, and what's the approximate timeline, have a sense of that?
No idea.
Chris and Eli, this one's a unique one, and you might recall when we had to work with the Department of Justice cops grant in the past, that you both needed to create these accounts, and I hope you recall your passwords.
I wrote it down this time.
Oh, good. Uh, so we're gonna have to go through an award acceptance process. I'll schedule time independently with each of you. Once that's complete, then uh then you'll, and assuming you vote okay for the sole source, and it's just as long as it takes Eli to place the order and then for it to arrive. Uh Eli, there'll also be additional reporting, you'll have to develop, I can help you, Jen can help you develop a spreadsheet for tracking the hours, the number of trainers to report the outcomes. The the sooner you make the purchase and we're ready to close it out, the sooner you don't have to make those recordings. So there's that little incentive for 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 that part of it. And so, yeah, just basically as soon as you guys get through the award process and then place the order and receive it. How long do you think it will take for them to ship it? Is it customized?
Uh, no, they um re-profer the quote.
Yeah.
I got that yesterday, we prefer the initial quote.
Okay.
They're on, they're on this quote. So it's a matter of when we tell them we're good to send them a P L. So they're all in stock and everything, people are using these now, right? There are some people, why, I think the closest is um let's say, north, not north of Rattler, uh somebody has it. No, that's, okay, it'll come to me.
Probably not for this Commissioners County, uh County Conference, but maybe next year.
Yeah. Okay, um so what we need then to again is a motion to accept the award for eighty thousand purchase virtual reality training simulator provided about six hundred hours of training to about a hundred and fifty law enforcement officers in the county to authorize Sheriff Eli Rivera and County Administrator Chris Coast to virtually execute and read grant agreement and sole source credit procurement of the Apex Officer Pro Training Simulator package. So, so one second. All right, any other questions? Seeing none, Commissioner Wadmack.
Aye.
Commissioner England.
Hi.
And Commissioner Clark.
Yes, indeed.
All right, thank you, thank you, Sheriff. So before I go on, is there any other orders that want me to take you out of?
Oh, no, now you can do random selection. Like, use the chairs if you don't mind, some in my eyes.
That's okay. All right, master agenda item number one, two, zero, eight. The victims of Pride Act, vocal brain, brain fence, Suzanne Vansley is here. Action expected, vote to accept and sign a grant agreement and associated documents for the vote grant for fiscal year twenty-six from the Louisiana Department of Justice for fifty thousand dollars, and where twelve thousand five hundred dollars in match.
Uh, is it okay to proceed with the absence of?
No, we said, yes, yes, actually, yes, yes, again, because we have two present.
We have two present, okay. This is Sarah Hoskin's uh grant, and we have had this one since, I believe, nineteen ninety.
Right.
Is among our eldest grants. Fifty thousand dollars plus the match covers her salary, but not in whole. She provides victims with a a handful through the system. I can answer any particular questions you may have. This is a, an old school one, but that doesn't mean that it's all on the tip of your tongue of what it is.
I remember the first person.
You were probably the initial manager of this grant way back when, yeah.
Where's the batch coming from?
Sa- her salary, because it doesn't, it doesn't cover all of it. Right, yeah, her salary, between her salary and benefits, that's it exceeds the, so the county puts a little more into it than the required match. Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing none. Can I have a motion? To sign the grant agreement associated documents for the vote grant for fiscal years twenty-six from the Louisiana Department of Justice for fifty thousand dollars, which required the twelve thousand five hundred dollar match.
Some second.
Um questions, Commissioner Wadmack?
Aye.
Commissioner England.
Hi.
And Commissioner Clark. Okay, moving on, master agenda item number twelve, zero, nine. D O T five, three, one, ten, one, zero, purchase a service grant agreement of image due fiscal year twenty-five, Suzanne Vansley, she has talked to it, acting expected, vote to accept and execute in the. Act expected both to accept and execute an amendment. To the Department of Justice F B A section five, three, one, ten, enhanced mobility for seniors and individuals with disabilities federal. Passed through for fifty year grant uh agreement at twenty five thousand five hundred dollars for a total of five thousand fifteen. Five hundred fifteen thousand one hundred dollars. Suzanne.
This is another grant we've had for a number of years. Jen now manages this one and sits on the Mananak Region Coordinating. Council for Community Transportation. The entirety of this amendment is going to go towards the Regional Mobility Manager. Contract that we have with Southwest Mobility, Southwest Regional Planning Commission and will cover. The contribution of time that Terry Johnson, who sits on that committee. Uh, to put time into helping to give an overview coordination program. Uh, between Jen and I, we can answer any specific questions that you have.
Just a question off the record. So is Terry Johnson a retired nurse from the clinic?
Terry Johnson is not a retired nurse from the clinic. He is.
He.
Is uh an employee of Southwest Region Planning Commission and works primarily on transportation. Although I did just see him yesterday at Healthy Mananak. Uh, a Healthy Mananak Alliance meeting, so I I think he covers a gamut of things, but I know that about half to three quarters of his time is funded through this contract.
Thanks. Okay. Seeing no other questions. Um, well, uh, motion for setting and executing amendments to the D M T F D A seven. Five, three, one, zero, enhanced mobility, she's an individual with disability. And federal uh pass throughs uh fiscal year twenty five grant agreement at twenty five thousand five hundred dollars. For a total of five hundred fifteen thousand one hundred dollars. Almost second. All right, seeing no other questions, Commissioner Wadman.
Aye.
Commissioner England.
Aye.
And Commissioner Clark.
Yes.
Okay, moving on. Master agenda item number one, two, one, one, grant sending annual reports, Suzanne Vansley's here. Expect received information report on grants department activity status for proceedings six months. Suzanne, you have documented in front of you.
Yes, and I realize I did not collate it properly, so please let me know. You should have one of these.
And I'll put it up on the screen too.
On the screen, yeah.
Do you want?
You should have two pages for the grants managed report and one page for grants written. If you do not have that, let us know and we can. Share those with you. Um, Davis needs a moment to pull the slides up.
I do, because if I.
And that's okay, if I can have like two minutes to go. Sure, great.
Yeah.
Will that work? All right, other.
Talk amongst yourselves.
Talk amongst yourselves, feel the excitement.
I I I was thinking that. Just because I. Guess I do. Then they wake up, he wakes up. Then I gotta take him out. Uh, I got a puppy.
Oh, yeah, you got the puppy. How's that going?
Um, it's going, it's good. I mean, it's your chicken. Hey, yeah, 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 this is, oh, we always had to do it, I, you know, have to put my, my twelve year old down, so. Uh, we decided to get a second, um, and so we got him on Monday, actually, after we got back from Maryland and um. Yeah, he's been good so far. I mean, he did wake up last night, first time he slept all the way through, then the last night he woke up. From upstairs, on the bathroom, went back upstairs. He spoke for about five minutes, four minutes. And then fell asleep. It's fine.
Yeah, that's just. No, I didn't put it in that, I gave it to you in the flash drive.
Oh, so I, so I can't.
So what should I do? Is email it to you?
If you don't mind. Uh, plugging in a flash drive is not allowed while we're plugged into the owl evidently, so we just need. Yeah, that's what happened the first time. I thought it was Wi-Fi, but it was interference. And so we got another minute here. So thank you.
Technical difficulties.
I guess we'll follow along.
Thank you.
J O E. J O E, yeah. J O E, B or J, J O E. That will be.
Chris, I can block an email from. Probably the real Don Bliss, if he's saying he was gonna share some.
The real, which probably.
You should have that. I mean, you, sometimes I give an email from myself. I had a great conversation with Don yesterday. Okay, yeah. Uh, I think we're gonna be working on a side project as uh in tandem. Getting them uh their own grants management toolbox. It'll be very interesting. We've never done this one before. I accept the challenge.
Great, there'll be super years to come with all the work that we put into making sure they're doing things the right way.
Including being their own grant recipient in the future.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
That would be a, that could hope to go along with it.
So.
Yeah, if you put it into slideshow. All right. Now that the excitement has been mounting for grants, guys, is this a record five items I've had in a row on a single meeting? I've observed it all. Incidentally, there's also five items to the grant's mission. Uh, which is in essence to bring as many grants into the county as possible. Through uh managing grants, fiscally sponsoring other organizations, writing grants, providing free grant writing to the community. And assisting other communities. We're on the second slide. And. I'll just go on like a professional without, there we go. Now advance to the third one, yeah. Okay. So just a refresher of what grant management it actually entails. Incredibly meticulous accounting. We work closely with the finance department. We mostly do this on spreadsheets and we balance it against the Harris General Ledger Reporting System. The spreadsheets show us budget to actual. It also shows the evolution of budgets and it itemizes the actual expenses. Jen reviews every single charge. Every piece of documentation that supports those charges. It involves subcontracting and procurement, for example, that Apex that we just spoke about. The financial reporting. Every grant has its own pattern and system. Some want them monthly, some want them quarterly, some want them semiannual, some want them as expended. Uh, we track the deliverables. Uh, every grant has things that need to be submitted. We use spreadsheets to ensure that we are checking all of their boxes. We, both of us, Jen and I, stay very in tune with what's going on with the uniform grant guidance. I'll tell you a little more about it, but there have been sweeping changes that incidentally have become effective yesterday. There's been mass upgrade, uh upgrade, an update to the uniform grant guidance. So we do uh follow trends and best practices in grants. Next slide. This year, year to date, and we're only three quarters through. But I believe that this is uh in terms of thirty nine grants, that's probably gonna go up a little bit now that we've accepted a few more. Seventeen point one in value. Award value and as you can see, scanning down there since I took over the grants department in twenty fourteen. I'm not showing twenty fourteen because it was only halfway through the year. This is a record. We so far have three point four million in revenue. I wish I could predict, but I can't what the year end will look like. Probably somewhere around five to six million. I'm not sure if that too will be a record. But we're close, we're very close. It's definitely a record in the amount of awards we're managing in a single year.
So this is total up at ten years, it's like hundred.
Okay.
Of grants managed.
Yeah.
Uh, you know what? I. Don't know, I do know that I.
Fourteen million dollars?
Well, uh, some years are duplicate in terms of value. This is the, a value of the award. What I do know offhand is that I have personally written for Cheshire County. Over one hundred and ten grants. In a total of about thirty one million dollars.
Some, some reflection of like. Um, Connecticut's just got a four million dollar grant, but it's four million over four years, right?
So it will be in the future, in twenty twenty three, that sixteen point eight. Include last year's four million and so it's the amount of award value. Managed in that year. The revenue might be the one that you wanna add up. It's a big number, yeah.
That's the point I wanted to make is that.
Yeah, my husband suggested I give you a graph and I spent too much time. But it does look something like that. Like that. It goes up.
Real quickly. You know, people say all the time, how have we balanced things out for the year? There's a lot of things that we've done to try to keep. Our portion of the taxes low. And there's a lot of things we've done and we can't promise every year that we can do that every year, but if you look over the last five years, it's been. And the last year was a negative zero point zero nine year, but that was zero. Over the last five or six years, it's been about twenty five percent increase. That's unheard of. You know, Davis has been working on a side project for us. Um, with other counties to see what they've been doing for the last six years, to see the variables. But a lot of that has to do with us pursuing grants to help offset. Some of the costs that we're, 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 we're putting in that would normally be in the budget. And in in that way, saving the tax. Think about the four point four million that we had to find or or put in the budget for the infrastructure for the sheriff's fiscal.
That's a good.
One call. If we don't do that, it's catastrophic. But we were able to find four point four million dollars through the grant process. To be able to cover those costs and not burden them back there. But that's the balancing act. I can never promise you that can happen every year, but that's the stuff that we try to do. To help offset those increases. Sorry.
I love that you like stats. I got more. I got more, go for the next one.
Well, you know, I'll just add to Chris's comment, you know, that is the, that is the, the core value in many ways of county government that. We are large enough uh and have the resources to actually bring in other people's money for the benefit of the entire county. Um, and there's no, there's no community uh that. Has the ability to do what we do and obviously. It adds millions and millions of dollars to the local economy that never would be here otherwise.
That's a good point that I did not make in any of this is that there is the multiplier effect. For example, Mick was just here and Lindsay on the screen about the, the seven hundred thousand and the, and the two. Subrecipient agreements, that's seven hundred thousand, that's not already circulating in this economy. And it's gonna go towards payroll. And through these contracts, which means you're gonna have two people newly employed. Making salaries and then they're gonna go into the community and spend money. So you, so you, in, it, in various forms, the best ones are the construction ones, which will have through dispatch. Because tho- that's, that's money spent almost right away and quickly.
Yeah. You're like, keep going.
So the composition of the grants that we presently manage, eleven are direct federal. Twenty are federal grants passed first through the state. And then six are direct from the state, three are private. So next one. Currently, we have twenty three grants that we are the direct recipients of and then we are sixteen of them, we pass through to others. So just like we get some from the state that are first federal, then state. Sixteen are either federal or state first and then we pass them on to others. We have twenty nine grants right now currently active, ten of which are new this year. And ten that are already closed. So that's how we get to our thirty nine in total. Next. Here we have some grants that I'm just gonna highlight for you. You are already very much aware of the system of care. We have overlapping system of care this year, one that just ended a month ago. And one that started two days ago, both at four million dollars and that adds into the seventeen million. We have some activities in the month of September for closing things out, but mostly that one's gonna come into a smooth landing. Two point one million of the grants represents gopher, which is, which we use for the Maplewood Nursing Home and the EMS equipment. Uh, the EMS equipment was largely five ambulance. And the nursing home was uh contributions towards the renovation project. We have one point five million in there towards the opioid abatement and what is unique and special about this one is it was for prior jail expenses. So this really added to the ability of the county to have revenue and offset taxes, because we had already spent that money. And I was crystal clear with them that for prior expenses, this would be okay. We went back and forth and it definitely was. One point six million went into the dis- dispatch infrastructure. That project is about a third of the way through. And it's split between two federal grants and then some of it is a county contribution. And then our next up in line there is one point one million spread over three grants for treatment courts. This is something that I find very interesting to consider is the jobs that are created or sustained through grants. So it's about thirteen and a half full-time jobs between grant, uh, grant funded directly physicians through us, Cheshire County. And subrecipient agreements or subcontract. Seven through connected families alone. We have five unique physicians, four and a quarter, of which uh would equa- would equate to full-time equivalent. So there's three full-time jobs in there, one halftime, one three-quarter time. And then three and three quarters through subcontract, namely NAMI and Antioch. And then not noted here is a little bit funded through the Institute of Disabilities. That we cover a portion of the hours for their coaches that they hold bar court. Four full-time jobs in treatment court, three direct to the, through the county, that would be Allison, Lisa and Seamus. And then the equivalent of one through a blue hair contract, which is our treatment provider. Uh, Terry is represented in the Mananak Coordinating Council, he's, he's about three quarters. We have two unique physicians which equate to about three quarters full-time equivalent in the county attorney's office. It recently ended earlier this year, but the chamber was uh had a half-time position funded through this grant that they have elected to sustain. And the C D B G specialist at Southwest Region Planning Commission is about half sustained through our contract. So I just wanna tell you a little bit about what fiscal sponsorship involves. It is not, here's the money and. Good for you. Uh, there's a lot that goes into it. Jen mostly handles this now. Uh, there's three million in C D B G, that's the easiest because of the specialists that they have over there. We mostly just do some tracking. Uh, the Department of Justice jag for the city of Keene, we sub-grant about five thousand. This has been annual. They thank me repeatedly for our help here. Because we save them a ton of time on writing and managing that grant for them. Uh, the E D A, which ended this year, was three hundred thousand. And then the recreational trails program, probably one of the smaller ones, but I would say the biggest time drain, at least at the moment. Yeah, it's a small one, but we work with a lot of volunteers. And then we have a combination of the D H H S and D O T this year. The D H H S one has now ended for the coordinating council. What we do for them is everything that we do for grants management for ourselves, only we work through middlemen for it. So it adds an, an additional layer of complexity. Because we still do all the same things that we have to do for ourselves, tracking of the deliverables, budget to actual. But we have to do it through a fine print contract with them. And a lot of times it's one of those, the degree to which and quality of our job depends on someone else doing their job first. Um, and a, a lot of this too also involves doing procurement for these agencies, which is especially the recreational trails. It's not a quick and easy breezy thing to do there. I'm gonna move on to writing next, but before I do, do you have any questions on the grants that we manage first? Okay. Uh, the second big thing that we do, uh, and, and, and mainly I'm managing this because since Jen has. Stepped up as a grant specialist, building upon the former role of a grants assistant, she does a lot of the post award management, which frees my time. For doing even more grants. Searching for grants, especially if I don't know off the top of my head where there is one for what we want. It can take a lot. It can take a lot of time and the landscape of grant availability changes by the minute. I cannot go back to the same place and find that it's still there. In a lot of cases, it involves coordinating teams of stakeholders, like we saw with Mick. And Lindsay earlier today, that was a team of about six or seven people. That I pulled together sometimes three and four times a week over a four or five week stretch. And walked them through a process of their own decision-making so that they can come to an agreement of what they would do with the funds. Did just the facilitation of team meetings is extraordinarily time-consuming. Uh, researching data and statistics goes into writing a grant. Obviously composing the narrative, but what I tell a lot of people is that we call it grant writing, but really it's a little bit of writing and it's a lot of everything else. Creating a budget in itself can take a ton of time, and then once you factor in the feedback of the team, it's done and redone and redone. Many, many times before we end up at a final budget that ultimately gets changed after we get the grant anyway. And then there's the assembly of multiple attachments, depending on the grant, they want everything from timelines, uh sign this form. Give us a separate attachment for your job descriptions and then some. And then, of course, strategic planning and program development, which kind of takes grant writing to a whole nother level. It's not just putting together a document for someone to decide to fund. Whether or not it's funded, I think that the strategic planning and program development process is beneficial. It helps programs think about what they want to be doing. Bookmark that thought for one second because later in this, I'm going to return back to that for two. Strategic planning program development processes that I'm working on right now. So let's do the numbers. In twenty twenty-four so far, I've written or worked on sixteen grand applications. Nine of which have already been awarded, but it's actually ten. Because this I put together on Monday and then found out Monday night about Eli's grant that he was here for earlier. We have four pending, I'll tell you about those in a moment, and two presently in process. The two that are in process are unlikely to be submitted this year. They're they're going to fall under twenty twenty-five. So not a record-breaking year in terms of number of grants written. But it is a record-breaking year, so I hope I put it in here. I think I do not. Maybe not. If you look at the grants written report, I believe we're pushing seven million, if not over. And it will be a record, it'll end up, this year will be a record in the award value awarded to the county. For grants, this will definitely be a record. Last year was also a record at six point one million, so we've got two years in a row. Hope I can keep that up. During some highlighted ones that were written this year. Connected families for the four million, as we've already talked about, the DOJ compassionate care, which was accepted today. The Menonoc uniforms, that's Terry's favorite. Uh, the Red Barn for solar panels now in process, we have Steve Horton working on that one. The portable radio law enforcement, this uh is awarded through the congressionally-directed spending process this year. It will turn into an application next year. Once the appropriations on in Washington make their way through, so it'll look and act and follow the timeline. Of the Apex simulator that we just signed off on, so you'll be hearing about that at least two more times. We got awarded the rail trail rehab project once again, this year's is going to be going towards work in Troy. This year's application is next year's work. We did two in a row for Westmoreland Surrey. For uh it's an eight-mile section that crosses through the two towns. And when the work this year is done, they should just be all set and, you know, except for regular maintenance on the trail. And now we are going to move our efforts south of Keene into the town of Troy, there's three miles in there in which that eighty thousand is going to go to. And not shown here is the one point two five million that we just applied to. Uh, technically not awarded yet. Uh, but it's a promising, it's almost guaranteed. Uh, but we do have nine hundred thirty-six thousand through congressionally-directed spending on the same timeline as the above portable radio consoles. And then the the training simulator, which is on this list as well. So we have uh uh among our pending is the Safe Exchange Center, you might recall earlier this year. I I don't want to be a pessimist, I'm going to still stay an optimist, it it. Sometimes Department of Justice is really late, they have not announced the twenty twenty-four awards. Uh, but it is two days past the point in which it would begin. We have been awarded Department of Justice grants as much as three months after their start date. So anything still goes?
It's hurry up, I think the time.
They're going to take eight months if they want them to make the approval, and then they're going to want eight days for us to return it back. That's how it goes. Uh, what is nice about these grants, this is the second time we applied for it, I. Pretty much already know if it's declined, why it would be declined, and what to do about it, we'll know in the feedback. Uh, and it it that one in that in that case comes down to partnerships that would need to be developed or we would qualify for. Uh, those partnerships are already in the works. We have a couple of pending contracts. Right now, so I would say unofficially awarded is the uh it's Emergency Management Planning Grant, that's what the MPG stands for through the ARPA funds. This is due not so much to my great grant writing as it is to Chris's sweet talking skills. With the Department of Safety and specifically with Robert Buxton, uh, I feel like that. That uh it was a super fast turnaround, but largely I didn't need to. To pour over every single word because it's sort of, sort of already there. And then we have a Department of Justice VALA thirty thousand, this is an annual grant that we get, it's it's a contract. Presently pending, and the JAG grant at ten thousand this year is also presently pending. I those three are pretty much in the bag. The top one might be the only one that we end up. Uh, VALA is um. Women's Violence Against Women's Act. I have no idea what JAG stands for.
Is it jobs for American?
No, no.
I think it's the, I think it's the Judge Adjuvant Grant or something like that.
Judge Advocate General, something like that?
A- a- edge event, I think is the word, but whatever.
Uh, you know, that's one acronym that I've never actually, you didn't know what it is, thank you, yeah. No, glad glad you did, alphabet soup is all part of it. So right now, the two that are being written, uh, well, the body cams may or may not be submitted this year. Uh, this is actually to extend the current body cam program that we have in the sheriff's office to include dashboard cameras. And then I'm working with the Rail Trail Group once again, this time we have high hopes for a purchase of equipment through USDA. That grant's not even an announce, but it is an annual announcement. Uh, once it becomes announced, we'll be ready to submit it. I expect it to open up maybe sometime between November and January. And they do sometime between January and March, so we'll be looking for equipment. All of that will be sub-granted to a snowmobile club. To own and manage the equipment, and they will be required through the agreement that we have with them that they share it. Two projects in the work, remember I mentioned to bookmark. About what goes into developing teams and program uh strategic planning. That's happening with two things right now, the pre-trial services. This is what you attended early uh last week, Chris, where we have a large group that Doug is actually doing most of the coordination. At this time, I'm sitting on a teeny tiny grant writing committee. But because there's a grant, it's moving along on a very nice timeline. And I think one of the nicest things about deadlines is it gets things done. If you think you have all the time in the world, you're probably going to take it. But if something needs to be set by November or December, well, then we're going to put it on a timeline and make it happen, and that is what is occurring. Uh, we've got as many as twenty-five people already involved to create a pre-trial services and a diversion program. Uh, what we uh what I'm also working on, not as moving along as quickly. But in the works is a first responder and mental health collaboration, also involving sheriff, the sheriff. And involving EMS team to come together with the high hopes of hiring a case manager. That when you encounter somebody that it's not really emergency, it's not really law. They kind of have something going on. We can bring in a case manager for. It's likely going to be a Department of Justice grant, there's two opportunities, there's another one through Department Health and Human Services. We have some examining to do, this one's in the very early phases, so both of these are on a track over the next several months to end up somewhere. Even if it doesn't end up in a grant awarded, these conversations are well worth having. Return on investment, this is a stat that we like, do you see those numbers in bold? That's pretty good. What the formula is, is you take revenue minus expenses, and then you divide that by expenses and that equals a return on investment. So there's two ways that I look at this, one is annual grant revenue and the other is return on new awards in the same year. So one is more of an award value, a portfolio value, and the other is the actual revenue that comes in in the year. So in twenty twenty-three, we had a record amount of annual revenue, it came in at about six point one million dollars. And the department expenses were a hundred and fifty-three thousand. So if you take six point one million minus one hundred fifty-three thousand and then divide by one fifty-three, you get three thousand nine hundred and eight percent. Return on investment. And that's on the annual grant revenue. So the same formula for new awards. We brought in about, again, six point one million in new awards. And then the department expenses, so one minus the other divided by the expenses, three thousand eight hundred seventy-seven percent. Return on investment.
Very nice.
This is uh the last slide on grant writing, can you answer any questions before we go into a different topic? Okay, grant writing. I offered the third class. It is sort of kind of annual, I'm doing one a year, not exactly at the same time, for a couple of years there, we did them in November. May seems to be a good month for it too. I announced it really late, so I did not get as many attendees as I had hoped. We had twelve attendees, two dropped pretty early on due to their availability. From them, and then as of mid-last week, I had reached out. I heard of thirteen of them having written applications, four of which have been awarded. Uh, this is the second time that I've requested feedback, but I was very actively requesting it, meaning I. Kind of twisted their arm and be like, this is what you agree to, here's a survey. Last year, I was more passive about it, I just encouraged them to please send information to me as opposed to specifically asking for it.
Let's think of those.
Oh, wide variety, wide variety. Um, mostly. In the November twenty twenty-three was mostly nonprofits, and in May twenty twenty-four was mostly municipalities. Uh, between the two, I've had representation from Hinsdale, from uh Troy, from Swansea. Um, I'd have to actually look at the attendee list a little more closely. Not mentioned there under May, I just heard the other die from one of the women who attended the class. She has since volunteered for human Menonoc Canadian Society, so she is now uh their volunteer grant writer as a result of this class. And they are working on forming a grant committee, she's reached out a couple of times with little questions here and there. So I find that to be a very exciting, that's not among those numbers because literally that was a message I got the other day.
Well, I did one of the sessions, session they were talking about. Strong focus on the biggest throws, they listed out all these, one of them was grants and expertise. And and so I, I'll bring my hand and talk about what we. What we were up against, what we came up with for a solution. And there was another community that actually uh that down in Virginia, that that is the University of Virginia is actually helping. Doing something similar to what you're doing, uh, but that's through like a program that you, you know, it's different. But they there must have had at least sixty people afterwards come up to me and ask more about it because they like started their communities. And one person came up to me and said, when's the next class? Because she was there as a nonprofit from region.
Good question, I don't know when the next class is.
Yeah, great program.
It's a great program, it's.
Teaching people how to fish.
It really is, yeah, it really is. For for a small handful of people, they're just so overwhelmed, they're like, not for me. But then you have the complete flip side that happens too, where they're like, I want a job in this. And a woman who's considering leaving her job to get a grant writing job instead. Uh, so you, it runs the gamut in between, it's incredibly time-intensive, especially building the materials. But I feel like May, the May group had me zero in on the right. Set of materials, the right uh curriculum, I designed the curriculum myself. And I make it, I call it straightforward grant writing because the idea behind it is exactly that, like. How can I boil this down in the most simplistic form for the layman to understand? Uh, it's only for those who work and volunteer in Cheshire County or for a nonprofit that serves Cheshire County, so one in May. Was for Peterborough players, but Peterborough players draws a lot of people from Cheshire County, so I let them in. Uh, in November, we had someone from the Jaffrey Theater, very similar, uh, Jaffrey is part of the county though. So it runs again, it's like I said, it's incredibly time-intensive, and then for a period of time after. I uh hear from them a lot about questions on what they're working on, and then it sort of trickles away so slowly after that. Uh, so it it just, I would say for about a three-month period, it consumes probably three-quarters of my time, and that's one of the reasons why. I'm not sure when the next one is, the other reason is, is I feel like I really need to be able to stand, hence I'm having. Issues with my ankles at the moment, and I don't think that this fall is going to happen.
I'll get to have it.
Probably not, no, that definitely, I would say definitely.
Thanks, dancing to attend one at least two times. Um, uh, opposite worship, really people maintain that level of of expertise that. No one else is doing in the region, and uh because of that, I think, yeah. And I've sat in on some of some of the time that she's teaching. There's a level of expertise that I would be high-pressed, because I I work with some other nonprofits that have some people that do it privately. They grant my help privately, their knowledge is here compared where Suzanne is. And and I think it's because her desire to seek out, but also our desire to make the grants part of something that's really a factor. In the overall scheme of the county.
I I cannot underscore how important the investment in training for both me and Janice. And I've I've noted several times how I do not see many, if any, attendees from New Hampshire. Most concerning would be, I have only one time ever, and it was virtual, encountered. A person who works in grants from the state level at any of these conference things, and it was virtual, it wasn't even in person. And there is a big difference between the quality, especially as it comes to networking that you can see, between virtual and uh and and in person. And the, I would say, when I get inquiries from other counties, which has happened, I tell them two things. One, my loyalty is to Cheshire County, and for that reason, I'm not going to do for you what I do for them. But what I will tell you is how I know what I know and brought this department here, and that is training. I recommend join the Grants Association and then go to all of their trainings. And to the extent that another county adopts that for themselves and invests in their training. And then I would also say that that person has a passion for it, this work cannot be done without enjoying it. If I didn't like this, this wouldn't happen. And so I think that training and which really it's from you guys, thank you, that makes that happen. Mixed with, I I am a grant geek, I do enjoy this, is what makes that possible.
I have a question, actually a double question. Uh, the first question is, have you in the past given a presentation like this? To the NHAC, National Association of of Counties? And the second question is, should you give a presentation like this to the NHAC?
I would say no and no.
So uh, so the second half of the question, what is the is the crucial one? Our from our perspective, I think.
Yes, and you know what the thing is, is that it's unfortunate, it's not true in every area. But in the world of grants, it is a zero-sum game. Our closest competition for these grants are other communities outside of Cheshire County on the state level. As you saw in a previous slide, twenty grants are state pass-through. There's only so many that they give out. If we have more counties also applying. Then we're competing against them.
Then we get less.
And we could ultimately get less, and it's only a matter of time, if they do the same thing, like I said, when they ask. can I have your searching tools? I say no. But what I will tell you is how I developed them. Go to the Grants Association. If they take me up on that advice and they join the Grant Professional Association and they show up at the annual trainings and there's monthly webinars and they invest themselves into the self-directed training programs that they have available, they too could end up doing the same thing. And if they do and they do this well, then it doesn't matter how good a grant writer is. What we all know is that even the best of a grant writer can't take a bad project to make it fundable. But sometimes if they only get one application or two, you can end up getting a project that isn't ordinarily funded. But if now they're going to have ten from all of the counties or even more, if you factor in the big towns, competitively, it goes down. On a federal level, I don't know that it's quite as much, but it is still there because when you don't get a, when we don't get awarded, you don't always know what goes into it. But what I do know from the trends is that on the federal level, they only want to geographically give out so much, especially to rural communities. So we are twice the competition with any other rural community. And in the event that more applications come from New Hampshire and we're a small state, small population compared to other states with higher populations, our likelihood of getting awarded goes down. And so I know this. And I would impart that upon you. It's wonderful that we do so well. But I feel like I would not want to encourage the other counties. Uh it it's great to let them know how we're doing, but I would not invite them into my grants course. And I would not present or encourage them to develop grant departments, simply because if they do, it becomes harder for us.
Of the other nine counties, how many do have grants departments?
I'm not completely sure, but I literally got a phone call from Co-OS yesterday or the day before, and they now have a department. I once sat down for an hour with Rockingham County. So I know at least those two have something.
It's beginning stages of people are all saying this, having the same conversation. We thought about last year asking Suzanne to do a grants presentation. And then I thought about it a little bit more than exactly what she said.
I would not.
What my feeling was at that time and that was, you know what, I didn't want to teach anybody. What we're, I mean, our whole goal here, I think Jack's whole idea was to help the county. And if if we're teaching others, we're teaching others in our community.
Yes.
The this corner of the state.
Yes.
That's what we need.
Yes.
We don't need to be teaching anybody else. That's on their own.
That's on them.
So that's what Jack did years ago when he started it added this the zip and in. And so I I think we're just building on that tradition and 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 making sure that our nonprofits that do important work in our communities have the skill set to be able to bring that money back. And if that's stealing away from other parts, it's on them.
That's on them. Yeah, we're here for Cheshire County. It's also why I technically copyright the material and I tell all of the students that I share this stuff with. You're not allowed to distribute it without my permission. And the only thing I'm screening for when they ask me is, are you sharing it with somebody inside or outside of Cheshire County?
To your two comments, I would say great minds think alike.
There's a little bit more to go because you were asking before about the organizations that we help. So part of the increase that you see here, I have ten new organizations that I've never consulted with before that I helped this year, seventeen that I helped this year that I've also consulted with in prior years. In most cases, this is grant searching. This is somebody saying, I'm looking for money for this. And do you know of any grants? In some cases, it's specific advice or tips or even just general advice and tips. And on even fewer cases, it's here's a grant I wrote. Can you review it for me? And I'll give a very comprehensive edit and review. Uh it the uptick is due to the grant writing course as well as just the publicity from within, that people are reaching out more and more as they hear more about. Uh if they have, especially if it's something that I'm able to do in the moment, I will absolutely. And whether or not I'm able to assist them has entirely to do with, do I have time in the moment to meet their deadline? So the next slide gives you a list of the organizations. Davis, can you flip it one time? These are all the ones just this year. Some of them are carried forward from other years. Top of the list is Menonak Economic Development Corps. I feel like I'm on their speed dial. Cody, I think has me on speed dial. We have a great relationship. He and I have been working closely with the uh Hinsdale Economic Development Corps. The gentleman in my class is a volunteer or rather a uh a paid contractor for them and is looking to develop that role. Uh the Center for Population Health, the Sexual Salt Resource Team, Center for Violence Prevention. Those three are now going to be pretty big deals going forward as a result of just a little bit that we did with them this year. Rather than read them all, does anyone jump out at you? Do you have a question on any of that so far? I'm going to switch subjects if one more time. Go ahead. I'm working on, this is, this is it, two special projects this year. One of them was a sweeping update to the Grants Policy Manual. This is due to the updates that I told you on the federal level that were effective yesterday. Massive changes. Uh this is also a spoiler alert that I will be bringing forward this for your review and adoption, maybe the sixteenth, maybe the twenty-third, maybe right away if you're just that excited. Uh and what I have in mind is taking the Grants Department to its next new level and providing internal annual grants training. Probably the number one request that the two of us would get from any department or person who works on grants is that they don't feel that they know enough to be working on the grant that they are working on. And I've already developed a slide deck inspired by the course that I have created in combination with the Grant Policy Manual and the things that come out in it. And also inspired by our annual safety training. And that may be around the same time of year, maybe the opposite side of the calendar. I don't know. But I could run the people who will work with or are have anything to do with grants through a presentation of this is the most important stuff to know. And then they can feel better equipped or at least refreshed on what it is. Uh the other special project that I'm working on is because my number one request from outside organizations is, is do you know of a grant to pay for that? I am doing the most comprehensive search of grant opportunities I have ever done. I kid you not, it is over a hundred pages long of summaries of grants specific for nonprofits and municipalities in Cheshire County. I expect it to be done this year. I have at least another seventy-five grants to vet before I add them to the list. And when requested, hey, do you know of a grant of this? I can turn it around super fast because I'm just going to go to my list and then pull up the ones that will work for them and reply by email end of day rather than starting from scratch every time I get a request, looking from the very beginning through all of the opportunities. So those are this year's top projects. That is the end of my presentation. Can I answer any questions for you? You missed it all, Missy.
Thank you, thank you.
We'll start it from the top for her.
Thank you very much for all of the appreciate the work and um
Well, I believe I'll be uh skipping over all of this because you just heard it when we do the budgets.
Okay, so you come back, uh you're going to give us something to gnaw on and read before you present it.
Yes, uh yeah, a a policy procedure manual, yes. But I was also thinking that we have the budget presentations coming up. I don't know, sooner or later than that. But uh I will just refresh these reports for you, but probably breeze right over all of that stuff all the time.
That's right. So there's only about fifty.
Yeah.
By the presentation, so it's going to really focus on the budget.
The budget. But normally I would go over that grant management report and the return on investment. But yeah, you got it now. This is a record-breaking year once again. Very exciting. All right. See y'all later. See y'all later.
All right, moving on, I'm going to start with number twelve, twelve. Payroll, HR and science and software upgrades of uh Cheryl Tronley and Misty are here and they are here to uh talk about to inform the mission of changes within talent software programs.
So I'm just going to start by um introducing Ms. Misty Hall. She's Assistant Finance Director. I'm sure you know her well. And um I brought her here. It's you should all be aware, we are um in the midst of a major uh payroll software upgrade. We learned um after um just doing a major software upgrade in two thousand nineteen, even though that's a lot of years ago, it's probably been um on our back door for at least two years that we learned that what we were sold um was going to end of life as of this year. So we had no choice but to do an upgrade and Misty's basically led this project as she has four other ones that we've gone through. Um we did one in two thousand eight, which was a major upgrade, another one in two thousand sixteen that was a semi. Um it wasn't as major, but it consumed a lot of time. Two thousand nineteen was major and this one is even bigger. Um it is a complete, complete night and day change of everything we have. Um again, Misty led the the whole interview process because we we had demos from, like very extensive demos from what at least four or five companies. Um and as much as I did not want to go with Chronos again because I was not um happy with the fact that you know this came as such a surprise. Um that's who we went with. It's now called UKG because UKG has basically merged or bought Chronos, but um I I brought Misty along. She's leading the project there. She'll give you um an overview of what we're experiencing, where our goal lives. Um and um the projects because it uh it is, it is, it is big. So.
Good morning. So yes, I'm here to explain to you our migration from currently, we are in Chronos Workforce Central and we are moving to UKG ready. Um and uh that project team is obviously is a team. It is a finance team of Cheryl, myself, Stacy and Payroll and Katie, our finance assistant, along with HR, which is Desiree and Kim, as well as IT, Rob and Melissa. We are replacing our current HRIS, uh time and attendance, uh advanced scheduler program, which works for the nursing department at the nursing home, as well as our payroll software and our ACA compliance. Uh in addition, we are adding services that we do not currently have, which are the recruiting module as well as electro- electronic onboarding, and we are adding advanced scheduler for the EMS operations. Uh and that will replace an existing software that they have, which is a duplication of efforts on their part.
Did you say, did you say, did you say uh scheduling for EMS?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
We will review. They are you currently using, Jack? Um the uh Alad Tech uh through TCP and we will replace that with our existing so that they're not having to enter the schedules into two places.
Right, well, that's a good idea.
Excellent. Uh by going to this new software, we are able to gain some features that we didn't have in any of this stuff that we have now. And some of those features are uh the ability to pre-board employees, so we can send information to employees such as hi Terry, welcome to the county. And on Tuesday, you're going to meet HR and here's a map of a location where you're going to meet. Here's some information that you should bring along with you. Instead of a letter, it's sort of a more uh engaging app to kind of, you know, help boost.
Have the next voice.
Yeah, it does. Like the story selection, you can pick which voice you wanted it. Uh some other exciting features are that the employees are going to be able to interact with the software. They're going to, over time, you know, some of these things will be phasing in. Uh we'll be uh reporting missed punches to their managers as well as needing to change cost centers if they're moving between departments. Requesting leave time, they'll be able to view their time cards in real time, view their schedules in real time, risk request schedule changes as well as shift swaps. The ability to view their leave balances in real time instead of just on their paste-up every two weeks. Uh there'll be an automated tracking of comp time. Right now, it's a very manual process and they'll be able to view those balances in real time as well. We will be moving to for certain segments, mobile punching as well as uh uh like punching on a computer, same thing, mobile punching. We can restrict that with geo-fencing or geo-location so that we can sort of have a little bit more control as to who does what and where. Uh the time clocks that were uh implementing are a little more advanced, a little more interactive with our staff. Uh we will be going to automated workflows that allow for some greater efficiencies within uh entry department uh processes such as missed punches, the staff when they interact with the software and say, hi Cheryl, I missed my punch this morning. I was here at eight o'clock. Please punch me in. Instead of writing it on a piece of paper and then Cheryl entering that at a later date and time when the employee submits that to their manager and the manager accepts that, it will automatically flow into the time card, which creates great, not only greater efficiency, but accuracy as well. Uh the employees will be able to see their pay history and starting in twenty twenty-six, they'll be able to review their W-two's online. They'll be able to review their pay stubs online as well as direct deposit advices. And for the finance department, that's huge with the amount of sorting, stuffing, distribution and mailing of those that don't pick them up.
Great. So that'll that'll eliminate that waste of paper and everything.
Yeah, I was wondering about that.
Yeah, good. That's good.
Why did, why did I say not send me a check?
Exactly. Yep, so that's going away.
Wonderful. Sounds like a great transition.
And then we will um, one of the later transitions in twenty twenty-six, we will be integrating with our employee navigator, which is our benefits hub so that we can eliminate the data entry of benefit deductions for employees. So the automatic interface, when an employee logs on to employee navigator, selects their benefits, once the effective date rolls in, it will automatically feed in so that we have that efficiency as well as, you know, accuracy. It eliminates the data entry points. So that's the change that we're going through. And how did we get there and what are we doing to get to the end goal? Uh we have reviewed our existing systems as well as the new features and the new system and decided on which ones to use, which ones not to use, and lots and lots of data validation.
So how much, how much I think, you know, line item was, is that what I said, you know, just for example, the postage?
Yep.
And and then the time and blah, blah, blah.
I honestly, I I I haven't been able to quantify that.
Figure, but I mean, is it, is it substantial?
It it will be substantial, I believe.
Since I just ordered for items, but my department ordered um probably about fourteen hundred dollars worth of window envelopes. That's uh gonna
Yeah.
diminish a lot. There's other things that, yes, our department has to uh mail out for the residents and whatnot, but uh that's gonna diminish a lot because of sending, we're we're at least whether they go out and mail or not, we're stuffing about four hundred fifty checks, direct deposits. The checks will still exist. Um you know, we don't have tons of people and um I they legally, I don't think we can force people to do direct deposit, but um there's ways to entice people to, but I don't think legally we can. Uh so there will there will be savings in the supply lines, most definitely. The workflow as well. I mean, right now, um because I have a position, we won't keep having somebody come in um for a couple hours every other week to help stuff the paycheck. So um I will no longer have to have somebody else come in to do that. Um and I know the nursing home will love it because there's a great deal of work of uh having to distribute those um pay stubs. Um uh put them alphabetically and then for those that don't pick them up, then then having to put postage on and put them out in the mail. So uh what another change that I'm not one hundred percent certain you touched on is the fact that we will be now producing payroll out of this system versus the Harris system.
Yep.
Um so you'll see um yields, the manifest that you currently get for payroll, you're going to still get one. It's going to be different because it's not coming out of the Harris system anymore. We'll be producing anything direct of this. But yeah, there will definitely be efficiencies. And um it's even once this project is we go live, which we'll talk a little bit about that and just the magnitude of the training that's going into this. It doesn't end because the goal is to get people paid. When we do this trip, uh when we go live, you want to make sure people get paid. That's going to be our goal. Uh some of these other things that she's talked about enhancements, that's where we need to make sure that they happen. Uh so it's that after the fact, continuing to work with the departments to start rolling out the other features of the program. Uh so it's that after the fact, continuing to work with the departments to start rolling out the other features of the program. And not just leave them on the wayside if no one's using them, so.
What what's, what's the?
Go ahead, Jack.
I was gonna say, what's, what's the uh IT impact in terms of internet security, given that this is uh. Looking uh a bit like a web-based uh uh network and so forth, so I can imagine. Uh the uh typical concerns from IT about. Uh separating uh firewalls and all that stuff.
Yeah, so um obviously, you know, Rob has been an integral part of getting this going. And he has reviewed uh their compliance documents to make sure that they're. Held to a standard that makes sure that they're keeping our data secure. He has uh. Purchased laptops for our onboarding and making sure that those are secure and the connections are secure, making sure to isolate where he can and where he needs to. To make sure that the data is all secure internally as well as when we reach out to the cloud with the software.
There's no doubt, it's a, it's a, it's a concern. Um I mean Kronos actually had a a data breach, what, a couple of years ago?
Yeah.
And um even talking to another counterpart in um another county that. Uh went through it, they basically had to like manually create things for a month. Um we can only hope that they've learned from it and they've actually expressed that they have, but. As we went through the the research for a new platform, no one does what. Everything's cloud-based now. We are.
Alternative.
Yeah, I mean, there's no alternative and this one would end alive, we, you know, we we could have keep. Using it because they're not creating any enhancement.
I want to get through that with what are the records that we have to, I was asking, okay, we can't just keep, keep a copy of that record that.
Yeah, because it goes away.
Yeah.
Well, every employee is obviously going to be able to print and keep their own records, so um. But any event, you know, it, uh it's not lost on these companies, Terry, that. These things save labor hours and this and that and the other thing and to me, that's rolled into the. Cost and then the subscription and then the ongoing and the upgrades and I think at the end of the day. It'll end up costing us money, but I don't think that's a bad thing. It'll just go from finance over to IT and you'll have software and upgrades and. All that other stuff, I, you know, it's always kind of a wash. Our budget has done nothing but expand. The more we develop software-based systems and we become more vulnerable to all of them and. Fundamentally tied, they're like a lifeline because you can't work without them and so. But it's not about the money, I don't think. It's just the way it is.
The other question which I have is uh will these changes which sound uh appropriate and good and. Uh well timed, will they require fewer personnel, more personnel or about the same?
It as far as uh my department, well, first of all, one of the things that is happening is I've had the making position that I'm not gonna need to build. Um it it's not, uh there's definitely going to be efficiencies, it's not as if there will be any um. Uh reduction in the staffing. Um e- every presentation that you see come through this door, even Suzanne's. Has an impact on our department. Our department does not just do the same thing every day. Every time Chris comes up with an idea, every time the commissioner.
She's not wrong.
We are, there's an impact to our department and so. The 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 staff that are there, I'm, I am regularly. Having to ask them to do something different today than they did not do yesterday. Um and so it's, it's the value of, you you know. You you there's, there's some employees that they're hired to do what they do and that's what they expect to do. You ask them to do anything more. They don't want more or whatever, I mean, it is part of the expectations of this, this. Staff in my office that. You're, you may be hired for this, but if you've got the skill level to do something more and as long as it does not. Um provide any uh uh funnelability to the internal controls of being able to have you do something. That um does not conflict with something that you shouldn't be doing, you're gonna, you're gonna be asked to do it and um it's, it's because. I mean, you know, you know, at some point, I'm sure it's gonna get to the point of how much more do you want me to do, how, you know? But I mean, again, it's, it's just one of those things that. There's plenty to be done. It's actually um, it's getting rid of some of the tedious. Things such as stuffing of paychecks. Like I said, I've got somebody coming in, um one of our pretty young receptionists. Um older woman that um has been more than grateful to come in. A couple hours every other week and she's been stuffing the paychecks, uh we don't have to do that, but um yes. That's, but I won't have to build this access position that I got.
And I should know this, but what's, what's the total number of people in your department?
Eight, yeah, including myself and Misty, there's a total of eight, I guess. And we, I mean, we've got, I get to that. Uh the majority of their job function, well. Their job function is handling all the resident accounts for or or all billing for the nursing home. Uh on top of that, both of them have a dual role of a different components of doing the billing for system care. So you, I've got some that specialize in things, um you know, accounts payable, um. Just the growth of grants, the growth of EMS, I mean, the number of checks that you see come through. I um has just grown exponentially, uh but.
It's a, it's a, an amazing bunch of individuals across the whole. That never waver when asked to take on more. They're all specialists in their own special way. And they cross-train at the same time.
It's very fluid job.
It it's, it really is. It's amazing to watch. Uh I mean, we are so well-served by that department. With the expertise that they have on every level, I mean, across the board, everyone in that office has a skill set. You know, um you know, if you walk benefits, I'm one of the biggest complainers a lot of times around benefits. User errors, it's all with me, but but you know, I mean, I could just, you can whoever it is in there, it's like. And and payroll, payroll is one of the hardest jobs in the county. Because people are always making mistakes, people are always forgetting, people in the department, it's always in the, and Stacy was. And then I will tell you with this, taking on this, Misty's been doing a big, big chunk of this and it is labor. Intensive, I mean, hours upon hours, upon hundreds of hours, okay, for us to get where we need to be and ready to go. Cheryl, at the same time, is sitting in on majority of these trainings and helping score. Peeling Misty off the floor, the office, you know, whatever it may be, but it's, it's, it's what these guys, what these two are doing. You oversee that and then everything else that they do normally is, it's, I'm involved with they've been able to achieve and we're, we're in a good place to cover this, so. Just saying.
Well, as as Cheryl knows, I'm always pushing to make sure that. The finance department has the personnel that they need and Cheryl is always telling me, no, I don't need more right now, I don't need more right now, but. I I hope that going forward, uh the board is sensitive to the workload, the complexity, the diversity. And the cross-training and backstop and bench strength that I think the finance office. Um will ultimately need and continue to 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 utilize, so. Um we may not meet more people now, but I. I I do believe that there's a day coming, so I I don't want to um ever pretend that they'll have a. That they're at the resource level that they need to be now and forever.
Yeah, and I, we we would definitely speak up. I mean, we talk about this all the time because. Uh we, I mean, we are, we're, we're kind of the hub. I mean, I mean, I, I know everyone has the, 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 a, a role of. Be needing the the operations that they need to oversee, but uh pull us away and. Um but it it is having that balance of, if you bring a full another full-time person into the office. How do you then just kind of divvy it, spars out a little section of everybody's job that then. Makes them feel like I've got something to do. I mean, the people that come to our, they they wanna work. I mean, they're not, you know, there, there are some people that are more than happy that if you have time to just kind of. Sit on Facebook or, and I'm not saying necessarily in the county, I'm just saying. They're, they're, they are there saying, what can I do next? What can I do next? So that's what the challenge is, is to actually. Another full-time position that is going to challenge somebody. That otherwise might continue to just be a revolving door and that just puts more pressure on us when we're continuing. If we're having to sit there and cross, you know, I'm sorry, train new staff.
Sure.
So is the turnover rate low?
It is, I mean, I think for the most, our, our, our turnover that we've seen in the past, I mean, is either number one, people retiring. That had been here for a while or bringing in new people to replace those retirees that we just weren't cutting. So I mean, would you agree in that manner?
Yep.
So, um but. And you know, we're always having to consider succession planning and we're. I'm not a sprang chick, I think.
And one of the items that Cheryl and I will talk about. Absolutely. Uh one of the things that Cheryl and I talk about on the regular is, you know, looking at. The skill level within the finance staff as well as the distribution of work and if something isn't appropriately aligned with somebody's skills or. Somebody who has a little bit stronger skill in an area, we're not afraid of moving that to better align all of that to. Just work better. So we are never doing this same thing all the time. It's always constantly thinking. Is there a better way to do it tomorrow than we're doing it today? So we're not, not afraid of change.
Definitely, I mean, I know if there's any other immediate questions, but. Want to continue?
I can continue on, yes. So going from the uh reviewing of the systems, the, the project. Timeline has been, uh we s- we're interviewing candidates and software companies and um. End of second, beginning of fourth or end of third, fourth quarter twenty twenty three, we made our selection. And then we really started having the conversations of how to move this project forward at the end of March of twenty twenty four. Starting in April, we started to have weekly meetings that take anywhere from one to two hours of a, of a. The majority of our team. Starting in June, we have ramped that up to two to four hours of weekly uh discovery or uh. Program building meetings uh and then starting in September is when we started the training for all of this software. The training component of this is not insignificant. Uh the HR component is roughly fourteen hours. The recruiting module is six and a half hours, time and attend- attendance is twelve and a half hours. Payroll is thirteen and a half, other miscellaneous reporting as well as scheduling and change management is another six and a half hours for a grand total. Fifty-three and a half hours of online training beyond the scope of the other portions of the project. The finance team will go through the majority of that. HR gets a little, little less because they only have to do the HR recruiting. So it's not an insignificant amount of training. Um our next steps are rolling out training to the department. Man, I say managers and I use that term loosely because for us, a department manager related to payroll is somebody who processes the time card on the. On the end of that department and for us, that's over fifty people that we have to get ready to roll out to train. We will do that in a diff- couple of different components. We will utilize the online platform that UKG provides to us. In addition to that, we will uh develop and roll out a train-to-trainer program so that we have our own internal resources that we can. You know, when somebody turns over, we can, you know, hold their hand through that process. And we will get that going immediately. Uh we will continue to engage these managers in the software to help develop their skills. And make them feel confident for our go-live um as well as continuing to test, test and test as we validate the data. We will be running a parallel payroll processing in early November to make sure that not only the configuration is correct, but it's returning the data that we expect. I.e. paying people how we want them to be paid, deductions happening how we want them to happen and taxes calculating correctly.
How much of this data be able to integrate from the old system or 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 you have?
So there's.
Input everything.
Yeah, no, there's a large component that they have done a data extraction and they've done it in parts and pieces. But always with that, then you have to go, did it align correctly, you know? Making a mistake on a pay rate when you pay an employee is significant. I can do a journal entry to move the cost center, I get a couple of other things. But when you are doing payroll calculations, you need to make sure, and ours are not insignificant, how we calculate for finance staff. Versus the people at the DOC at the nursing home are vastly different and just one row off on that spreadsheet throws everything off. So uh spreadsheets have been my life.
How many current pay quotes do we have?
I believe we are, we were able to consolidate and I think we're down to ninety.
Yeah, ninety, ninety days employees can get paid.
I had over, on Friday evening, I finished the um what we call accrual configurations. So we accrue, so how, how? Hold on a Friday night. So how um our staff accrues leave time, holidays, vacation, at sick time. We have thirty-eight different configuration profiles on how that is then dispersed out and making sure that that's then appropriately assigned to the. Individuals so that they get the appropriate leave time because that's just as important as the pay in their paycheck. So uh when I say validate data, it, it's pretty significant. Uh continuing on and um. As we move through the data validation and configuring and making sure the backbone of it is up to date, uh. It is, I would be remiss to say that we have not, not thought of the fact that. There's always room for that go-live to not happen as we expect. We are planning and we are putting all the time and net and effort into making sure that it's going to go fine, but we do have a backup plan. If at the eleventh hour, we're not comfortable, so we will remain with our existing system, we will figure it out, we have a plan. We've mapped it out, so we do have a backup plan.
So just, does that mean, does that mean during some transition, you'll have to run a redundant payroll just in case?
Yes, yep, we'll do a parallel payroll in early to mid-November. Um and then we will go live with the new system and go live means we shut off the existing time clocks. We uh shut down the server to communicating to the existing time clocks, turn on the new time card. Um collection method, which is a series of clocks and web and mobile punching across the organization, so it starts feeding into the new program. Um and then we will produce our final check uh in the old system as our last check of twenty twenty four, which will be dated twelve twenty of twenty twenty four. Our first check in the new system will be the first check of twenty twenty five, which is dated one, two, one, three, one, three. And um. Our big week will be the week between uh Christmas and New Year's, that will be the week, it will be the week that we put in. A lot of hours to make sure this all goes smoothly because.
I'll be, I'll be shell, I'll be sheltering in place uh with all the doors and windows closed on that day. Uh cuz I, I just, it's too scary to think about.
And it, I mean, we sit there all the time saying this is scary, but it's exciting, but scary, it's not the. Um and the purpose of the go-live being the first paycheck in January is because, because we are gonna now be producing. Paychecks out of a whole new system. If we don't do this, we are either gonna be producing two W twos for everybody. There's gonna be, or we're gonna have to figure out a way to manually go in and update the new system with what has been created in the old system. So that's why um choosing to try, I mean, not try, we will, we'll.
And but and also with the deadlines of the, the federal government requiring W twos to be issued in January as well as being submitted to them. I mean, that, that is a whole lot of bandwidth that you have to cover. If you have to bring in all that data to produce. The IRS is not gonna accept two W twos from us for our staff, so you're having to bring in all that data and this gives us a clear line that. Twenty twenty four is here, twenty twenty five is here and we're moving forward into a whole new generation.
And with all that said, you're still gonna be hearing buzzers from.
That, that was my last bullet point and all of this is business as usual as finance. That that was my last bullet point and all of this is business as usual as finance staff uh. Hires new people in the department, manages to pay, continue to pay people on time and accurately as well as support the other. Departments within the county with their financial operations as well as get ready to send you your twenty twenty five budget.
You have all your dishes in the air, that's cool.
What are you gonna do for the rest of the day, though? That's the question.
I thought I'd take a nap.
I think that's, that'd be okay.
This is all as complicated as biochemistry, neurophysiology and pharmacology combined one time profession.
Well, well, you know, it really does underscore, and I don't know that it's ever been any different, that really between the finance office and I T. They are the mission critical. Uh, departments, really. Without them, we all go home.
But so, um, we just wanna make sure that you are updated on where all of this stands and. Uh, so, that's.
Thank you very, thank you very much. Thank you, Miss. I still want to thank.
Okay.
No, that's all right, I already did. All right, now I'm gonna move on now. Back for dinner, I had a number one, two, one, three, health and dental deduction discussion. Cheryl Trombley is to speak and act and discuss health and dental deductions.
So what um we're presenting uh is if this goes um would hand in hand with uh. This new payroll upgrade and Miss T had mentioned that we have. A a system called Employee Navigator that in current is what employees. Plotting to to choose their benefits during open enrollment and upon hire. This and the system is um gonna be able to eventually not occasionally, it's not a first goal. Is going to be able to interface directly into um. Into the new UKG system. So that that's now cutting down on coming to everyone and uh in or into two systems. What we have that is, and Chris was part of the meeting too, when we were meeting with Richard too. We currently have employees paid one month in advance for their health and dental. So for somebody that they become eligible in November for their health insurance because they're a new hire. Um, or even during open enrollment, there you have to get, you have to start your premium reductions in the month of October. For becoming eligible in the month of November. There's really no. Specific reason why, maybe it goes goes back a long time ago when we were fully insured. Having the money available to then pay our our provider. But it's really, it's one of those answers that when somebody says to me, why do you do it that way? The answer is because we've all stopped that way. Uh, and so. Because we do that, we can't, we will not be able to. We'll be able to interface, but we would not be able to utilize the reporting that's necessary to be able to tie out deductions in this system. By taking out these premiums one month in advance. Further, there's all sorts of other things that go along with this. I mean, because in new hire employees are eligible for benefits after day sixty. They're already having to quickly make their decision and start their deductions in their second month employment in order to be. Eligible. So there's like a really quick turnaround that can cause people if they don't get their decisions made in a timely fashion to. Already get behind in deductions. We have this happen a lot for people that have qualifying events, maybe getting married, a birth of a child. Mid year where they're already kind of evolved. Because you know, they're they're coming to us with um, you know. Sometimes you know when your child's gonna be expected, but other times you don't. It's. It kind of well, obviously. The child comes when they wanna come. So it's just, it's one of these things that what we are proposing. In order to um. Get off of this schedule is to give a one month. Premium holiday to all employees, which means that there they would not have deductions. With help. And what we would propose is in the month of December for the new open enrollment period so that they would then. Start having deductions based on their elections in January. For January. Um, we are fun balance of our uh health. Our self funded health program can sustain it. It is, it's not necessarily insignificant. The employees contributions are about ninety thousand dollars a month. But it will eventually catch up. What will also in turn is right now when an employee terminates, they're able to stay on our plan for about thirty days. This would then um cut that period of time down that they'd be only on our plan for about fifteen days. So. And that can also be a uh reduce the risk of how long an employee stays on our plan after termination. So. I'm. That I'm asking for the considerations that the the commissioners approve what I would consider a premium holiday. Um, where employees in the month of December. Take a break with our deductions for health and dental. And that we get onto a timeline that we're taking them out in months that they are getting coverage for.
Sure.
Family's which are in tight budget. Would appreciate that as well. Sounds good.
Cheryl, what what was the comment about the fund balance in the health account? Oh, what's the, what's the, what's the connection, I guess?
Well, just saying that, I mean, our accumulated um. Amounts in order to be able to sustain and cover pre uh claims is healthy enough that by by not having. By giving this holiday or premium holiday, it's not going to point to cause us to um.
Oh, okay.
I mean, it's not just that I feel like our claims are things have ticked up and will be interesting to see what our um. What our renewal is going to be. TRG thought is suggesting it's gonna be good, but. I I I kind of know it. I know.
Well, well.
They don't know about.
Right, that's so the. So the 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 uh the premium holiday doesn't really change the. Um, cash flow, it just changes the the timing of it because everybody would get that. Prepaid month ultimately anyway. So, but I get it. Yeah, I get it. Um, I I certainly don't have any objection to to that.
Yeah, so I would motion. To uh allow for a premium holiday for the month of December. Second, all right, you have a question, seeing none, Commissioner Wadman?
All right.
Commissioner England, all right, Richard Clark.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next up is the twenty twenty four tax allocation chart uh that we got this week. Um, this year, the special action expect to discuss county twenty twenty four tax allocation. And as you, as you look at it, you see that.
I I didn't prepare to see it.
And you, you sent Davis a pocket of email?
Yes.
And I'll just sort of, I'll lead, I'll lead off a little bit and.
Actually, I'll email the tenant, that's that.
Yes, so, uh, so that you you can look at this, but the frontline is remember. We have a budget. This year, the budget came out at zero point zero nine, negative zero point zero nine percent of increase taxes to be raised. And I just said earlier, zero percent the year before. And then like a one point something a year before that. But so we've had a low number, but then we send that number to Concord and they have formulas. And if the town has had build out. Like Swansea has, or if they have um a reevaluation that's. Every five years for a certain, you know, area, if there's been a lot of purchase, a lot of things purchased or something major purchased. It can trigger an evaluation that that will occur. So all those things happen. And then they put that into their formula, even though we have a flat line budget. It can still increase, but what I would say to you is that it would increase more if we had a higher budget. So that's the, that's the bang out of all this.
So Jack, did you get it? I sent it to two emails of yours. You're muted, Jack. Okay, he's good. Okay, so um. I gave you like a two sided thing. Let's start with the side that actually said ta- county tax portionment. Cause the other one says equalized valuation history. Okay, so um what I provided here is the twenty point three county apportionment. That was um uh um. Applicable to each town in the city of King and then what is is now the twenty twenty four county apportionment. As you can see, the totals. Um, in twenty twenty three, the total taxes that we raised in twenty twenty three, not that you're seeing it, had no decrease over the prior year. The twenty ten four taxes to be raised, as Chris mentioned, was actually decreased by twenty five thousand seven hundred eighty six dollars. The next column where it says percentage of county taxes, this is um. The overall. Percentage of of the twenty nine million sixty seven thousand that's applicable to each uh town. Um, and as you can see, he he's always the biggest because they have the biggest um. Valuation of property, which is what ties into the 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 percentage that's uh that each. Town and city receives. The next column is giving the dollar now of the amount of increase and decrease over twenty twenty four. From twenty twenty three, the percentage increase, the next column. And then what I chose to do was to show you in the next couple of columns was what each town experienced in the prior year. Of whether or not they had an increase or decrease. Um, and then what the overall two year um increase, decrease was so. Um, just so you can see how ebbs and flows. And again, as Chris mentioned. We didn't increase our taxes to be raised. Um. And again, we actually decreased it, but it doesn't mean that. Each town then doesn't have an increase or decrease over prior year. And it's all because of the property valuation in their town or city. That depending on the overall value of what they have to. Collect from their. Um, their 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 taxpayers. It's what they consider equalized because they just have a bigger base to be able to send out the same. Uh, amount that needs to be collected. So if you flip to the next slide where equalization. Evaluation history I've provided the last few years and as I've noted. What's used to produce our our twenty twenty four tax collection is actually twenty twenty three equalized evaluations that. It's always one year time. Um, so, um. You can see what the property value or property values were in each of the towns. And how they either increased or decreased and. It's really to the extent of the percentage of how much they increase. Not so much the dollar that then flows to why they may get a bigger piece of what. Our county taxes are. So it's really.
Why something's.
Go up or down, yeah.
With the property values. West Westland upset a deep or something.
Yeah.
But a lot of property seven one percent on there. The. If you look at this too, look at uh one year, one year, the year before, they might have gone gone down by a hundred thousand dollars. And then they found out by, you know, forty thousand the next year. So that's a, you know, uh. Like, you know, really a true increase in the last two years of sixty thousand dollars. You know, it's just those, those are the little video secreties that we just have to make sure as we, you know, get from towns or we have special with downs. This is what they're seeing from us is that. The the first thing that I said is is the most most important, that is, this is where we're at. And if we have a bigger increase. Then what we had a negative last year, then they would see even that much more. Uh, because that's what they have, that's what they have to do. So.
Oh, me, you know, property value issues, yeah, so to 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 support why they keep getting increases. Um, when I, so I've got the 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 bills um are already. Here with everybody get shot coming inside, but I also sent out with the bills and analysis. That goes out to every town select board that shows a three year history of showing what their. Um, valuations were, what percentage of those valuations um represented the overall. Property value issues of Cheshire County, which then leads into how much they get. Uh, the apportionment of county taxes. So I try to explain the process. Sometimes it's still not understood, but there is something that goes out to explain so. They can see why either they're going up or down. Just wanted. Um, to see that. Does anybody have any questions? I can go on, but if you have any questions about the process.
Right, I do, actually. The twenty nine so county tax. That is split with the towns based on what percentage.
Of their property valuation. So that's why on the the flip side, um. There, so in other words. When you look at Alstead on the first page that they're getting two point two two nine eight percent of the county taxes. It's because, and I don't have it here, I could have done this, the their two hundred ninety four million eight hundred ninety thousand is. Two point two two nine eight of that thirteen. So that's how it's um. Allocated is based on their pers- pers- individual percentage of the overall. Valuation is what they are allocated. Uh, for the county apportionment. The D R A actually does this, we do this. We get this certified by the Department of Revenue Administration after all the towns send in their uh property assessed valuations. Thank you.
Okay, um, then I can move on to old business. New business. Instead of China item, we'll accept a weekly manifest in minutes. Twenty twenty four. All right. Commissioner Wadman?
Yes.
Mr. England, I think Mr. Clark is.
That's two yeses and one I.
I know.
I'm just contrary, that was a boring conversation.
Uh, calendar, anything, Davis, that we need to be aware of, uh, aside from the meeting on Monday?
Uh, note next week for the commission meeting will be here again. Okay, instead of the.
Okay. Where's the administrative report?
It's about to get there.
Okay.
So I'll start with um. With the first foremost, uh, you've heard about it, but I want to, again, just for the record, you know, the the the. What we've been doing with Southwest Regional Planning Mission, uh, Southwest Fire Mutual Aid. Um, is that we've been working with them to help uh find the fundings. Do you know that we were to get the one point? Uh, one million two hundred fifty thousand dollars uh from um the GoFundus that the governor had left over to. Uh, homeless security directors of Houston. Um, my understanding is we have an individual that was with uh the homeland. Security director this weekend. He asked him about how things were going. He applauded us. Security director this weekend. He asked him about how things were going. He applauded us because. They gave us a deadline of uh the first to get everything in and we had it in within three days. And uh he was, he's like, no one does that that quick. And what it did is it put us at the top of the queue. What he's told, he said he met with the governor. Uh um lay out on Saturday uh also and uh and that the governor was aware of where things stood and that they're gonna push this forward as soon as possible. So that's. A good thing for us to to get that, you know, down. I think that that what that means that has to go, the finalizations is uh. What we had to do, we had to put together, so it was fascinating that they take all this time and then they said, we need it now. So what we did is we just. Did it as quick as possible, get everything in. Suzanne was then able to formulate it into the what they needed. And we we gotta uh put together a budget that outlined the the what we were gonna do with that billion two five. And. And um. So we're, you know, it goes to uh uh goes to the uh governor's council and um. Gets approved and move forward. And so.
Those are all steps from that question you asked the governor. I think many.
It all started in. Yeah, that all started. You know, if if he's gonna ask questions, I'm gonna ask. I had all the numbers in my head. I'm like, did he, did he, did he? I was like. You're wicked slack. So um so it all worked. It all, and that's worked out. I will tell you, I'll skip the front a little bit. Uh um in communication with Chase Hagman, who's Chase Hagman. Chase Hagman is the guy that we work with uh when we need some some GoFundus bodies back in the day for certain projects. We were able to work with him. He has great respect for the work we did that we. Everything that we said we were gonna do did. And so uh I've asked him, one, um to give me insight on. How I start tracking down and pestering people uh that have a hundred twenty two million dollars for last mile so that we can see where they stand. Uh that we we pastored them for a while, but had signed for me a little bit. And he uh just the best. Makes sure we're on the radar. All right, you get to near the end and you sell money left over if you will. Um and we'll see what would, then he put us on the radar so that we can come back and. And I already, and as I I've said before, we went, I met with the uh. Deputy Secretary for uh Commerce, which this one he came from. And um. And he said, you know, the states can get this money, they can utilize it however they they want, but it's telecommunications. It's not just last files, telecommunications. So I stressed that multiple times that I've had that conversation. And my theory is if you're a pest enough, they just finally give up and they give you some level of money. So that's what we're gonna continue to try to do. My goal would be to get at least a million out of them. I'd like I'd like two million, but million would be okay too. Um so that's, and then uh I'm I'm working on some other, Chase said that he may have some other ideas that we could utilize. So I'm working with that too. Um. Cheryl has done a great job of uh the ambulance, uh the. If you remember, there was a bill before for an increase of funding of three hundred uh fifty percent of what the current. Cost is for privates to pay E M S uh services throughout the state, not just us. And we were in major support of that, Senator Preston. Apprentice, apprentice. Um. I can't remember. It could be Preston. Um and and she uh she brought it forward and she has great experience in the field, so I have great respect. And made it all the way through to committee of commerce, uh representative fund at that point said, we need a little bit more study. The state said two years, the job said one year. Um so that one year means that we have the, they hired a group to do a study of what the true cost would, what the true increase needs to be. Um I'm a little concerned that an insurance company is actually doing the study, but that's okay.
Uh just so that. Yeah, so that it won't be, you know, the estimate won't be a year old by the time.
Yeah, yeah, no, but they're asking us for monies. They're asking us for a lot of uh guidance and and uh. And and funding. And so Cheryl's been working with an individual that's that's doing the work.
Sure.
Such a survey and and it's not gonna ease the test. And uh because we don't have a lot of the stuff that everybody else turn in because we haven't had a Medicaid. I said, bought it.
Now, it's a Medicare.
Medicare.
I can. Couple of years ago, started having existing ambulance providers do cost reports, so much of the cost report that we do for the nursing home. Uh but it was only you, you're selected and you had to event in existence. So they were uh the they certainly wanted. That data, if you had to produce it, that's what they were asking for, but without having done the cost before, they're basically having to create their own cost report. The expect side of it is easy and I've been able to um. It can not commit stuff, but I can have them acknowledge that. They don't want our. Calendar year, January twenty three to December twenty three, because first half of the year, this is nothing like the last half. So it's having to. Come up with a cost from July one, fifteen thirty of twenty twenty four, and that's the easy part. But now it's breaking down. The revenue sources in all sorts of different manners. And I've been able to work with our current billing company. To extract to the best of their ability. Match up what they're looking for. But now my challenge is coastal money. Cause they're not gonna give us any reports. So I'm having to go back through their reporting and see the best of how I can manipulate. Giving them. The revenue. Um to to dust. You know, connect with what they're looking for. They they realize everybody's not gonna really give to them perfectly, but they're trying to even get a sense of.
Yeah.
Reimbursements from insurance companies, Medicare, Medicaid, B A. Private.
It was coastal income from E M S.
Yeah, so we had two different billing companies, coastal with our original one that we ended up parting ways and E N X and their new watch, but they all started doing the billing for us. As of November of twenty twenty. Pretty. So it's trying to figure out.
Percent of the income which they out bring in, they get.
Each time.
That high.
Yeah, so our previous ones were four percent and I guess that was. As one of those examples that he gave.
Eight percent, I I'd be intent if they kept on getting.
But it's still, it's still one of those areas where the the monies that come in for or. Whether what they do is pennies on the dollar. As well as sometimes not even being able to bill period for what they're doing. Because of the just the restrictions of. What's allowed to bill for and what's not. It's it's just, it's really, it's opened my eyes to an incredibly broken system. That that I I don't see how it can continue that way. And it sounds like. Over the years, it's gotten worse for all providers.
So the way this system is really set up, we're never really gonna be able to. Realize. Even fifty percent.
Yeah, it's.
We're billing, we're billing close to seven million dollars. And, you know, but the receipts are 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 not even close to. So if we, if the receipts were matching, we're we're billing.
Oh, well, yeah, that.
It all stopped. It's not.
But that's impossible.
Yeah, but it's always one of those things. I mean, that's what kind of happens is when you come up with your your cost or your charge and you're never gonna get your charge. I mean, that's no different than the nursing home is when you're dealing with. You know.
Well.
You got costs, but then you get these contractual um adjustments that you just have to accept and when you your biggest. Um when your biggest percentage is Medicare and they're paying, you know, three hundred dollars for a two thousand dollar. Um. Uh service. And you don't have a choice and of you have, you have to accept Medicare, have to accept Medicaid. It's the fact that we don't have to accept insurance companies. And so that's why the majority of ambulance providers don't go into contract with the insurance companies. Because if they do, they're gonna do the same thing as Medicare with Medicare and just lowball what they're gonna end up presenting. But on the flip side. They're still gonna only pay you what they want. And then what they do is they say, we're still gonna pay you what we want. So now you need to go after the patient for the rest. So it's just a.
It is a. Yeah, it is a bit of a death spiral and um because the insurance companies have relied on and built their whole model on the back of the inadequate. Uh Medicare and Medicaid reimbursement structure. And so they've actually had a bit of a windfall. Um because uh as as Cheryl and Misty probably know. Uh but you know, when I started as the county administrator, um Medicaid actually paid the cost of. Or they actually reimbursed at a rate that was equal to the cost of what it costs to provide that, the expenses. Now, there were some. Uh some expenses that were limited or cut back, but in general, the Medicaid reimbursement rate equal the cost of providing that care. Um slide forward to today, they don't cover half of it, I don't think, probably even less, which is why it takes so many tax dollars to subsidize Maplewood, which actually. Had a bit of very thin, but an obvious positive cash flow. The revenue was slightly higher than expenses and it was no burden whatsoever to the taxpayer. And you fast forward to today and that's where we're at. Then as Obamacare came in, the Affordable Care Act. Um, you know, one of the things we hear from the private insurers is, oh, it's all these ambulance companies trying to make money. Well, of course, very few of them do. Um A M R happens to be somewhat lucky because they they have volume in highly dense cities. But under the Affordable Care Act, uh insurance companies never have to pay out more than eighty five percent of the premiums they collect. So they are always guaranteed immense profits. And if you look at their um. Their reports to their stockholders, uh they they make billions and billions of dollars. I mean, there's no commercial insurer that is suffering. Because they get to to reduce reimbursement rates in order to keep their profit. They're guaranteed fifteen percent. Profit over their expenses. And so the statute um allows them to adjust their reimbursement rates down in order to maintain their profit. So their 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 rationale at some level is, well, if we increase our reimbursement rates, we're gonna have to increase premiums. And at some level, that is probably possibly true if they elected to not make as much money for their stockholders. Um but on the other hand, so what? If they have to increase their premiums, they have to do it anyway. Um but it is truly breaking the back of the hospital, of the healthcare system. If you look at, uh you know, Stuart's Healthcare and these hospitals over in Portsmouth that are curtailing services and um. You know, they just can't survive. That's why we're into this. Um. So it it's 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 a little interesting that an insurance entity is doing this cost thing because they will absolutely justify it as a way to increase premiums. And I will bet you a dollar um or a thirty three percent of a dollar that they will fight. Um they they will fight for an increase in premiums and they will continue to argue for low reimbursement rates. So. Um. As we know, there is uh at least one uh commercial insurer of their Harvard Pilgrim, which has always had a philosophical approach that they want to cover the costs. Uh of 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 healthcare. And so their checks and their reimbursement rates tend to be higher. Um. Cause they want your expenses to be covered and they realize that you have to have a little money over that for capital replacement, that sort of thing. But the other commercial insurers, they absolutely believe that this should be publicly funded, the same as your fire department. And um. And that's the showdown. And so far, the commissioner of insurance. The the insurance uh department has supported that and they're more interested in lobbying for the insurance companies and premiums than they are actually for the provision of care. Um so. That's the big, that's the big discussion and I don't know where it's gonna go. Um the insurance lobbies have been profoundly successful so far. Um and have escaped any sort of legislative pressure to actually reimburse. Uh pre-hospital providers and really hospital providers at survivable rates. Um. So. It's it's a, it's an interest, interesting dynamic.
And people will tell you that it's a little small portion, private is only a small portion of the overall, all Medicare and Medicaid are the other costs that that drive this. And so, you know, we aren't just resting on on the hope that doing this, we have, we have, you know, spoken with people. You were there for the the Florida, down Florida, about getting Medicare to bump up their levels, a bipartisan approach to this. And um well, if that's the case, then we can argue with the state that Medicaid should be where Medicare is and all the damage, but that one helps, not an answer. And even some of the insurance is not the 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 answer, just part of the of helping the problem. And we're just gonna have to figure out the rest of it moving forward, but it's it, we're, we just gonna continue to fight um with with this and get all the paperwork in. So they have. I mean, there are a lot of people are looking to us as a leader. Um and because we're with the county. We're the only county, but we're a county. And so they're they're looking to us to be a voice too. And and so we we're doing everything in our power. Make sure we're part of that picture too.
And the state commission and the insurance commission is wedded, wedded to a reimbursement model. That replicates the Medicare reimbursement model. And of course, it's a fiction because by design. Medicare was never intended to actually uh reimburse based on cost. It was the, it was the cheap stepchild of the government. But.
Yeah.
When you have commissioners of insurance that that think that that's the be all and the end all, it further cripples the healthcare system. And it allows insurance companies to reimburse at pitiful rates while continuing to make their fifteen percent profit. Look up, look up the stock meetings, look up the uh net earnings reports of of Anthem and. Um Cigna and others, and you'll see an immense, an immense amount of money that they make off of that. And I I have some of those printed out from last year. Um so for them to give us the poor me scenario that they wouldn't be able to tolerate is, of course, bullshit as a federal law. Uh protects them in order to that they can always uh retain fifteen percent of premiums collected. I'm done.
Yeah. And 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 the only thing out there, I'll 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 close with just that. It's important for for everybody out there that actually kinds of listens to this or whatever, but anytime we have the time, the the ability to say this. We're not doing it just for us. There are private ambulance services in our community that are struggling to stay open. There are small town ambulance services that are struggling because their reimburseals are nowhere where they need and they, that means they can't bump up the. The page and the level of the, so they're losing people to go to other places. It's all collapsing. There's a great article, I think we sent it out to um from uh the commissioner of EMS services, that's Jersey. And that this was, that they're seeing the same things across the country. So anything we're doing here, we're doing it, we're doing it so that, I mean. The city key just wanna take on more towns. They don't wanna become this massive big, they they don't, they want, if that, I I would believe, I believe that if they had their way. They could just be doing a city key because there are enough calls in the city to gain that that they could do that. And so. You know, the the, you know, there's gotta be an answer to all this. And we we have Mayor Mac County coming down to take a look at our ambulance services uh. In the week of October seventeenth, I believe it is. And um. And so they're, because they're running for the same problem. And it's all about billing. If we can have a billing issue, then the losers would still be here. I would believe, I would hope, I would hope. You know, because if they, you know, if they were getting the level of money that they needed to, they could have been paying what they needed to be paying, whatever. We wouldn't be here. But but with a two million dollar leaning against the IRS and the IRS closed them. We wouldn't be here, but but with a two million dollar lien against the IRS and the IRS closed them. You know, we didn't have a choice. All that goes, it all goes crazy. So if we're gonna see that, we've had one town, I won't say what the town is yet until it's official, that's interested in in doesn't have our service currently. Um, we have another town that is struggling to staff their ambulance services. We're hearing this constantly. We're, but our budget's here. Unless those become a reality, then we have to figure that out. But it's 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 collapsing everywhere and we are just better situated, I believe, than others.
We didn't prepare for this. It would have been on our lap anyway. I just, I don't see where we would have been called. So unfortunately, we were prepared, but. Yeah, I mean, but it's almost like nursing homes. I mean. There the nursing homes, you know, seeing across the country and something in New Hampshire, that's close because the reimbursement rates. Have just gotten to the point where they can't operate. And that's exactly what's happening now with EMS is it's. It over the past many years, just gradually gotten worse and worse and, you know, again. Labor. We all are in the same situation where the employees are the ones on some level dictating what they're getting paid because they can't. Um, and that cost is not going down.
You know, the interesting thing. The interesting thing is we, uh, Chris and I actually consulted, uh, with a, uh, major national law firm. To evaluate the likelihood of a class action lawsuit against the insurance company's reimbursement rates. Um, and they 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 didn't see a very favorable outcome. Uh, for no other reason than this particular law firm has had a class action lawsuit against Aetna several times. And they have so much resources that they have literally had a class action lawsuit. Out there regarding reimbursement rates for fifteen years and the attorneys for, uh. Uh, Anthem, um, can just kill you with the legal process and. Um, and it's an amazingly, uh, strong financial juggernaut that works against. Adequate reimbursement. So it's, uh, it is, it is a national. And a, and an overwhelming problem and it won't be fixed really until somehow or other. We find the political will and the strength to mandate cost-based reimbursement.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna move on to the best, just, uh, by yeah, and so must, uh, we have the EMS delegation meeting, uh, ten AM on Monday. It's a work session. We're right here in this room. Um, we're gonna just be working on. On our, we'll work on our presentation to the, to that group and just explain what our thinking is. Where we are today so that they have a better understanding and go back. It's the EMS delegation committee. So it's Dan who says some people have come together. And just, uh, it's a work session where we just go through all the numbers, tell them where things are at.
So ten o'clock.
There is an opportunity on November eighth, uh, this year, a left is called an election briefing meeting. At the Concord Hotel, uh, put on by the DuPont Group, who actually, you know, runs the insurance association in the county. So. If you're interested in going up to that, that here, any insight of what they may be bringing in. We just need to know so that we can register you and you attempt. I think there's practice involved. Met with, uh, the the transit, uh. Yeah. The Southwest Regional Planning Commission has a contract with, uh, some individuals that are helping them look at a bottles for the. For the this area. They had some questions for me about, you know, if if the county was to help with some level of it. You know, you know, process and all that jazz. I said, the biggest issue I told them is that this is something you really want. To start, you know, then it's, you know, you're you're too awake. We're, you know, actually making that a reality. In the fact that you need to really, you know, put a model together and explain what that means. What they're looking at is. Part of transportation is an eighty-twenty split. So we, you know, whatever that eighty-twenty split would be, we'd have the twenty percent. And and so I said, again, I think you need to tell me exactly what that would look like, what that means. What the, you know, we're the ones that are running it because I really want to. There's other groups, the community that take that on and we pass through. You know, is it just for Cheshire County? If the money can only be for Cheshire County, I'm just trying to get them. Lots of information so they understand. So it felt like, um, then I entered, we came over and wanted three million dollars. To help with how how this project be able to do around housing. We said, you haven't done your homework. And come back, come back someday. And I said, but your benefit is still here, here, here. And they did all those steps. And now they're with medic and now the program's running. And it didn't, we just gave you guys, that's it.
No, uh, formation of a transit authority is on their list of possibilities. They they seem really reticent to talk about that. Yeah, well, to me, that seems like the only real option.
Well, it 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 probably is the only option, but it's profoundly expensive and it was, it it. All the these trans, transit authorities and transportation systems. They involve a lot of subsidization because they're never adequately financed by user fees or federal dollars. And historically, at least twenty-five or so years ago, and when I used to sit around a table, we would talk about all of these things. Uh, nobody had that money. Nobody wanted to spend that money. And frankly. Um, we weren't really effective at identifying enough of a need. Um, you know, you have to have some sort of critical mass of bodies to move around. And even if you look at the friendly bus, I'm not sure that their numbers. Um, are that, I'll say significant, um, as against the population. Um, and 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 home healthcare has been subsidizing it for decades. Uh, uh, out of their, just their commitment to getting people to healthcare. Um, so that's the big nut. It's it's, if we really felt as though we were meeting a need. And the need was great enough. Um, you could then talk about the justification for publicly funding it. Uh, but none of that's really ever come together, at least to my knowledge.
No, not for a general population, you know, and 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 Chris actually. Express this, if we're gonna do something like that, it would, it would be, uh, uh, for sectors. Uh, of need, like, uh, you know, like friendly bus, uh, uh, services, seniors to go to the hospital and. Shopping, things like that. And, you know, we'd have to identify, uh, areas in the county. Uh, groups in the county that that have that particular need.
And they brought, they brought that up. I said to them, I said, well, that's the plan. Tell me what the plan looks like. And Jack, to your, to your conversation, what I said to them yesterday was, I understand and I believe. There's isolation going on in our communities. And that can be, uh, causing people not to be able to bring medical. Help on it, any type of healthcare, jobs, whatever it may be, they are locked in because they are isolated. With that being said, when I say that, I don't know what that means because I don't know. How big of that is, you need to tell me. I said, you're going to get questions and you brought it up, brought it up the bed. You're gonna get questions on how strong of a need is this really? And so they they understand that these are some of the things that they still need to to lock down, but. That's the thing with with, I agree with you. I've had this, I've been in part of these conversations before, before I was even here. We were talking about transit. I agree in the transit department for Manana Developmental Services. I was part of my area of coverage. And we grew it and we had, but we had probably at the, at the most, we probably had close to eighty individuals. Which doesn't sound like a lot, but we have, you know, this, the individual disabilities, we have roofs going. It was a huge impact, but those individuals. But I know how much that costs. And I know it also, we kind of cut it half when some of the bunk went away. And we, and 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 India's just couldn't do it by itself. So, yeah, there's a lot that goes into this. There's, there's all this. So it's it's nowhere, they they've got a road to to go down. So they 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 understood that and they got off the phone with me yesterday.
You know, the other, the other aspect of it, the the existing transit authorities like home healthcare and what what you did, Chris. Was, um, was, uh, individual specific or affinity group specific. And it's not conducive to like commuter stuff. I mean, if you, if you really want to get the numbers up there and stop the fifteen thousand cars a day. Uh, coming in on one oh one and the twelve thousand coming in on Route twelve. You have to have enough of a structure of transit that people can get to work at various times over a two or three hour period. And, um, that's profoundly expensive and virtually impossible. Um, so. You know, we we kind of look at the big cities and we say, well, you know, the train comes every fifteen minutes. Uh, and that's how people get to work and back again, they can rely on it. But. We'll never have that because there's not enough people to make it economically. Viable or or even efficient. Um, that's, that's the struggle and I. I I know people continue to, continue to talk about that isolation and the traffic stuff, but. Um, I just don't know what the solution is. It's, it's not what everybody's been looking at because. We've been talking about this and looking at this for thirty years.
Yeah, I agree. One of the things, especially, you know, uh, the environmental need of getting rid of some of these cars, whatever. Is is really created by the, the lack of external costs or. Of of money, uh, in the price of fuel or in, you know, in 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 the price of the automobile or whatever. It creates external costs to the environment and and to the public at large afterwards. It's sort of like cleaning up a landfill, you know, it's easy to dump, dump everything in a landfill because it's cheap. You don't have to pay for cleaning it up, you know, and and that's, that's where we. Have a problem getting money is is from those, those entities that are. Either making money or benefiting somehow by those external costs that they're passing on. So.
Through the cent, through senior center as well, we've realized that there are many, many seniors. All widows, uh, who are worse, uh, we're dealing with, uh, loneliness resulting in depression as well. That's, it's a very tough situation to the individual.
What's the, uh, just, what is the venture beyond that?
Very reasonable, I think fifty-five dollars per year.
Yeah, it was a bunch. Okay, can you keep on moving on? Um, uh, I reached out to, uh, Holy Spirit Director Foxon on another issue. We sent him the demo you, um, and, uh, the, around the position that we're gonna talk to him about. And also, uh, we sent him Southwest, uh, planning commission. Uh, they're they're full on home communication, district total. And so we're just looking at when, when we can set the time to further those conversations, hopefully later next week. And then, um, unions, just, uh, nothing really, there's a report out. And, uh, except for, we have renegotiations going on right now, asking nursing home, teachers, EMS. And sheriff deputy dispatch. We haven't started with the sheriff dispatch. And deputies yet, um, but we'll, we'll do so. I believe we're moving towards, we're moving to EMS and those will just start it this week. So we'll get them, uh. We have started that meeting this week, uh, and just gonna talk about quotas, the budget. And also the healthcare dental enrollment. What do we call that again? Why do I? Yeah, open enrollment, enrollment. I'm not one of them. Um, I'm meeting with, uh, I'm inviting. Kelly, you know, is, uh, is coming to hear about both the region. This is the third of three governor candidates that, uh, well, they, the chamber, uh, they collaborate, they met with, they met Steve Wilmington first. Then they met with, uh, Joyce Craig and, uh, Kelly, that's the last person there. But it just tells what we're doing over here, why we're doing it, what we're trying to do at this point in the stage. And, um, I think it's worthwhile, a lot more to do that. ADAN program, uh. Just, uh, we have a house being worked on in Jaffrey, a house being worked on, being the house. Being worked on, or deal some, remember the program, let's say houses. It's they have looks like a health crisis in their life. They are in the hospital, they can't be home because they don't have the ability to get in the home. Or there, there's a bathroom issue that needs to be, bars need to be put up, whatever it may be. And we set aside monies. Uh, to be able to address those needs, but that's the worst. And then last thing I have, just an update, um, I'd like you guys to know when I'm, I'm. I took on the chairmanship of Manana Collaborative next year. I still have Chair of Team Housing. I've stepped down from a hundred days forward. We're doing the podcast this week. It's, uh, Connected Families New Hampshire. And this weekend, I start my second stand at the radio station from eight to ten doing radio. Uh, so we have our voice out there. So I spent the weekend telling our stories.
Oh, is that, was that a different concept than your previous radio show?
Yeah, no, the previous one was nine to twelve.
Yeah.
And so, uh, this one is, uh, was, uh, John. Uh, can't think of his name. He's doing this, this timeline and he just got, he got it for like five years. Last time I did my radio show, I did it ten years. So Dan talked me into doing it once a month. I said, all right, I'll do once a month, this time, this time. And, uh, and go for that. So I'll have multiple people on, probably have you on at some point, talk about, you know, uh, power and all that jazz. Or whatever we want to talk about.
Great.
So that's what we're doing here.
Like what you asked.
Yeah, there you go. That's my report.
Hey, just, uh. Well, just, just before we transit, just before we transition, uh, too much more, I just wanted to, uh. Say again, uh, I think I said it before to Claudia that I appreciate the attention. That Claudia Stewart has paid to, uh, what it is, uh, her role might be as our county commissioner. She's, she's attended virtually every meeting that, that, that I think we've had since, uh, she announced her candidacy and. Um, I think it's, um, uh, a very, uh, strong showing that, that, that she's making the investment to actually. Understand the job. So I think that's a testament to, uh, to you, Claudia. So thank you.
Thank you, Jack, and I appreciate the opportunity to come and work.
I would second that acknowledgement as well.
Thank you.
Owen, favorite. All right, uh, so we have, we do have a, um, a non-public or a star saying on one day. Full entry to a, all right, thank you. Uh, the the special promotion compensation in any public employee or. And that's what it is, it's about compensation. So, um, motion to go into the public, so move. All right, Commissioner Wasman.
Yes.
Commissioner England.
Hi.
And Mr. Clark.
Doug, are you still there? If not, I'm gonna pick you up.
He looks like he's still there.
Okay, I'm gonna kick him out.
Let's Davis step up.
Yes, and then I'll, I'll leave as well.
I vote, I vote yes.
Do you want? Did you get that, did it?
Dead, actually.
Did you think, and I got, I got some nice stuff. A lot, a lot of great letterwork. Okay. Sure. So Davis is gonna step out too and then, um.
Oh, yeah, let me stop the recording.
Okay, so Bob, Bob, so Bob can, can, can. Okay, so Bob, Bob, so Bob can 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 make that motion. Well, no, you have to state it in the public. Or Cheryl can restate it and then we'll do it.
Yes, the the motion is to accept the recommendation of the market wage adjustment. The Assistant Finance Director effective. And I will, I should have a date.
With the next pay period.
Yeah, so it would be current, current pay period, so it would be effective September twenty-nine. September twenty-second, twenty twenty-four.
Second, six stairs down here.
Oh, I'll second it. I didn't know Terry was gonna, yeah.
Yeah, okay, Sean, yes. Good morning, aye, and Commissioner Clark. All right, motion carries three zero. And at this point, a motion to adjourn. So move, so that gets.